Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Can we please have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. Mayor Pro-Tam Santos.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Samore.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Santos, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A clear reminder to the public, anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to place his or her name on the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any items at the end of the meeting. Okay. We have some minutes for approval. The August 27th, 2013. Have anybody had any changes? Council member Witt.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. The minutes have been passed six to zero with Mayor... Whoa, hasn't changed. With Mayor Coombs absent. Shows me absent.
You can move over here.
I could vote over there. So, Mayor Coombs absent. Are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Mayor Pro-Tam Santos, we don't have any additional documents, but there were some supplemental materials we've delivered to you on Thursday for the budget item, and those items were put up on the web as well.
Okay. Sigourney Rogers, your report, Harold. You got anything?
No report.
Okay. Alright. Everyone just bear with me, my computer's finally coming up here. There's a proclamation, which is right here. Proclamation designating September 6th through the 13th as STEM week in Longmont, Colorado. I believe, Don Hadet. Well, I know some people from the school district are here. That's alright, take your time.
Thank you.
I'm Regina Rinaldi.
How are you doing? Right on the front, there's...
Oh, turn that on.
How are you?
I'm loud enough unfortunately, but I probably didn't need it. I'm Regina Rinaldi, I'm an assistant superintendent in St. Green, and we are thrilled to be here to just briefly tell you about our STEM week in St. Green Valley schools. We have identified this week as STEM week with many celebrations of our STEM initiatives in St. Green. I was one of the authors of the Race to the Top grant, and we have expanded our... I don't know how many people know about that, but that's a $16.6 million, keep telling people that, initiative that St. Green was fortunate enough to access. And part of that grant is to spread STEM initiatives throughout the district, particularly in the skyline future, but really all over the district. And so, we are starting this school year with lots of STEM initiatives, and excited about what we've done. We visited with the Longmont Economic Council, we shared some information with the Chamber of Commerce. We've got meetings set up all week long in terms of our schools. We'll have an exhibition Friday night at our big gala. It's our first of its kind, STEMCon Gala. I hope many of you will be there to attend that event. We'll have 16 tables of students and exhibition work for those in the community to see, and hundreds of business members, we're up to 400 guests at that event this Friday night. So, a whole week of celebration of STEM in St. Green Valley.
Thank you Regina. Don, I'm gonna give you an opportunity. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you very much.
Come on down.
I just want to thank the city council for all of the support that you've given our schools over the past several years. Much of what we've been able to accomplish is possible because of your support and your endorsement, so we're very, very grateful. And again, as Regina said, we hope that you'll all be able to join us this Friday. So, thank you.
Thank you, and also want to at least, you have to get the superintendent of the year, you know, some airtime. So, congratulations on that.
I appreciate it.
So, let me read this proclamation. A proclamation designating September 6th through the 13th, 2013, a STEM week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the St. Green Valley School District is largely, is actively engaged in educating students and providing them with skills that they need in the 21st century, and whereas the St. Green Valley School District has been very successful in implementing and promoting science, technology, engineering, and math STEM programs in the district in addition to many other outstanding programs in the other areas, and whereas the Longmont business, the Longmont business community has been actively engaged... Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather. Actively, active engaged in working with the district to ensure students graduate with skills required in the current workforce, and whereas the STEM programs are successful in large part due to the partnerships developed with the business community and the district, has been recognized nationally for the outstanding STEM programs, and whereas the Longmont community is fortunate to have nationally recognized STEM programs in addition to other successful programs, and active business community working to support the programs, and an enthusiastic community ready to embrace such success. There now for I, Gabe Santos, Mayor Pro-Tam, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim September 6th through the 13th, 2013, a STEM week in Longmont, and invite all citizens in the community to be aware of this vital organization. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
And please excuse my cough. Okay, first call, public invited to be heard. I see there's only one name on this list. Sam Seifi.
Yes, sir.
Come on down.
Thank you so much. Thank you all of you. We sure appreciate it.
And please excuse my cough. Okay, first call, public invited to be heard. I see there's only one name on this list. Sam Seifi.
Yes, sir.
Come on down.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Pro-Tam, members of the council. Sam Seifi, president of Longmont Sister Cities. I'm here to thank you for your past support, and let you know a little bit about the history of Longmont Sister Cities. As you probably know, Longmont Sister Cities started in 1991. That's long before I came to this great city, 11 years ago. And since then, we have had more than 550, probably close to 570 students exchanged with our two sister cities, Chino, Japan, and Ciudad Guzman in Mexico. Every year, we send our students to these two countries and to these great cities, and equally, they send their students back to here. Our students and their students stay at people's individuals' homes. I was lucky enough the last few years to host one of these great students. Longmont Sister Cities at the same time also participates in various activities in the city, such as inclusive community, Cinco de Mayo, and with the museum, the... I can't pronounce the... Day of the Dead, that's in English. We thank you again for your support, and we invite you to continue to support us in the years to come. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. There are no other names on the first call, public invited to be heard, so I will close first call.
Mayor Pro-Tam Santos, the first item on your agenda is ordinance 2013-41, which is a bill for an ordinance amending additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. This is a public hearing, but we have no staff presentation.
Does the council have any questions for members of staff? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing for this item. There are no residents that have signed up. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council member Witt.
I'd like to move ordinance 2013-41.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent.
The second item on your agenda is ordinance 2013-42, a bill for an ordinance amending 2013-2017 capital improvement program. Again, this is a public hearing, but we don't have a staff presentation.
Do members of council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. There, no one has signed up for this. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council member Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tam. I'd like to move ordinance 2013-42 for approval.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent.
Next is your consent agenda. First item is two ordinances regarding airport hangar leases. Ordinance 2013-43, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand municipal airport hangar 18C to Anderson TE Family LLC. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for September 24th. Ordinance 2013-44 is an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand municipal airport hangar H13A to Horizon Flying Club LLC, and the public hearing and second reading of that is scheduled for September 24th. Item 9B is resolution 2013-83, authorizing a loan of excess earnings in the city's fleet service fund to the public improvements fund, and providing for repayment of the loan from the public improvement fund. Item 9C is, there are four resolutions. The first one is resolution 2013-84, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a click-it-or-ticket grant. The second one is resolution 2013-85, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a click-it-or-ticket nighttime grant. The third resolution is resolution 2013-86, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a high visibility DUI enforcement grant. And finally, resolution R2013-87, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a law enforcement assistance fund grant. Item 9D is a resolution 2013-88, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the organized crime drug enforcement task forces program for the use of the state and local overtime and authorized expense strategic initiative program. And staff does not need to pull any of these items.
Okay. Council member Witt.
I'd like to move their consent agenda.
Council member Levison.
Thank you. I actually have a quick question on the one airport lease that's the option, which is, sorry, trying to find the right one. See, Tim is here. The reason I'm asking is because Tim is here.
Which one is it?
It's ordinance 2013-44 for the hangar lease parcel to Horizon Flying Club.
Okay, so you want to remove...
No, I just, actually, I just had a question. Oh, I guess I should remove it. Sorry, want to remove it.
Okay, so, A? Okay. A2?
Root A. I thought it would be E2. I'd like to move the consent agenda B minus item A.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent. 9A. And really, A2.
Yeah, it's actually 9A2.
Council member Levison.
Okay. I guess the one question that I had was the... When I was reading through the agreement for the leased property, it didn't have anything about the option in there. Let me get to the right page. I thought that I would read something in that lease as talking about the option. I see on page... This is not working real well for me right now. One of the pages does talk about, you know, giving notice of not wanting to continue the lease for 10 months and relocating the utilities, but it just, at the end of the lease, it talked about... Sorry, I'm not at the right place here. Anyway, it doesn't, it talks about the lease term being 20 years, and so I just didn't know whether or not there was, we would put in that option like on the first page of the lease. I'm just trying to get to the right section here. My computer is, my screen is freezing up. On page 75 of the electronic packet, it talks about the term being 20 years, commencing on this, on this, on the date this lease is fully executed. So, does that mean that we would not fully execute the lease until the one-year option period or the evaluation of moving the utilities? Because that's on the next page.
Mayor Pro-Tam Santos, council member Levison. Yes, there is an option in here. I'm not exactly quite sure what number they put this in, but I do know that there might have been a problem with this lease last week, and this is the version that you're looking at, which may mean we have to get the updated version of this lease for the next meeting. But there's an option period in the lease that they will lease the property for one year. If the relocation of the utilities are feasible, they'll exercise the option for the remaining 19 years.
Okay, because the lease that I reviewed had section 2.1, talks about the term of the lease being 20 years, and then 2.3 talks about relocating the utilities, and talks about the 10, you know, to notify the city within 10 months if that's not feasible. And then at the end of the lease, my screen is moving along here. Now it's frozen. I'm trying to look at, I think it's towards the last page of the lease. So, are you saying that you would like to re-present this another, another week? I'm trying to get to the other section.
Mayor Pro-Tam Santos, council member Levison. Yes, they have the 10 months in which to explore the feasibility of relocating. If after that time, they will notify us within 30 days whether they plan on executing the other 19 years of that lease, or finishing out the one-year period with the full lease payment.
Okay, and I guess that... I'm not finding the right, the right section, anyway. So, this version is okay. I'm seeing, Harold nod that this is an okay version.
Yes, according to the version I have, it's not printed off on there, but mine was the online version, but the city manager indicates it is the correct version.
Okay.
Section 2.3 talks about the leasing must relocate at its sole cost and expense. It goes on to say, if it determines that it is too expensive to move the utilities, notwithstanding any other provision of this lease, leasing may terminate this lease upon written notice to the city within 10 months.
Okay. And I just thought I was gonna read something that it would be a one-year with an option for an additional 19. That's the way I thought I would read it. But, alright. I guess my other question would be, where will the utilities be moved to? Are we gonna, is it gonna be like a, we're playing checkers, that the utilities will be moved to another parcel, and then we'll come along a few years, and that parcel will be needed, and then that next person will be moving them, and then would the city...
My, my computer is, my screen is freezing up. On page 75 of the electronic packet, it talks about the term being 20 years, commencing on this, um, on this, on the date this lease is fully executed. So would that mean that we would not fully execute the lease until the one-year option period or the evaluation of moving the utilities? Because that's on the next page.
Mayor Protem Santos, councilmember Levison. Yes, there is an option in here. I'm not exactly quite sure what number they put this in, but I do know that there might have been a problem with this lease last week and this is the version that you're looking at, which may mean we have to get the updated version of this lease for the next meeting. But there's an option period in the lease that they will lease the property for one year. If the relocation of the utilities are feasible, they'll exercise the option for the remaining 19 years.
Okay, because the lease that I reviewed had, um, section 2.1, talks about the term of lease being 20 years. And then 2.3 talks about relocating the utilities and talks about the 10, you know, a 10, to notify the city within 10 months if that's not feasible. And then at the end of the lease, my screen is moving along here. Now it's frozen. I'm trying to look at, I think it's towards the last page of the lease. So, um, are you saying that, that you would like to re-present this another, another week? I'm trying to get to the other section.
Mayor Protem Santos, councilmember Levison. Yes, they, they have the 10 months in which to explore the feasibility of relocating. If after that time, they will notify us within 30 days whether they plan on executing the other 19 years of that lease or finishing out the one-year period with the full lease payment.
Okay, and I guess that, um, I'm not finding the right, the right section, anyway. So, so this version is okay. I'm seeing Harold nod that this is an okay version.
Yes, according to the version I have, it's not printed off on there, but mine was the online version. But the city manager indicates it is the correct version.
Okay.
Section 2.3, um,
That's the section.
Talks about the leasing must relocate at its sole cost and expense.
Uh huh.
Um, it goes on to say, if it determines that it is too expensive to move the utilities, notwithstanding any other provision of this lease, leasing may terminate this lease upon written notice to the city within 10 months.
Okay. Oh, I, and I just thought I was going to read something that it would be a one-year with an option for an additional 19. That's the way I thought I would read it. But, um, all right. Um, I guess my other question would be, where will the utilities be moved to? Are we gonna, is it gonna be like a, we're playing checkers? That the utilities will be moved to another parcel? And then we'll come along a few years and that parcel will be needed? And then that next person will be moving them? And then would the city, would the city be the contractor? Or would they hire an independent contractor to move the utilities?
Mayor Protem Santos, councilmember Levison. No, they're not going to play hopscotch with the utilities. This is the only vacant parcel that we have left on the north side of the airport where we could possibly squeeze a hangar in. Because of the other buildings in, in the separation between the other buildings where we're planning on relocating these utilities, it's somewhat of an easement area. So once we put those utilities in that area, they will remain there and continue to serve those hangars.
And that's a very, um, so is there going to be some gained efficiency in relocating the utilities beyond the fact that there's a building that wants to be built on top of where they are now?
When we relocate these utilities, we will have the ability to bring in water and sewer service to some hangars that weren't previously able to be served, which is a possibility that that new service will be a benefit to the airport.
Great, thank you very much for answering those questions. And can I make a motion if no one else has? Thank you. Um, I'd like to move ordinance 2013-44.
It's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Let's vote. It passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent. There's still another lease that needs to be approved. Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to move ordinance 2013-43.
It's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. It passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent. Before we hit the bu, bu, excuse me, the budget presentation, I'm tongue-tied. Um, this council, I have a question. Would council like to do the boards and commissions appointment before it gets too late? Do that now before we get to the budget? Sometimes we do the budget and then we get into the boards and commissions a little bit later in the evening. Or would you like to go ahead and delve into the budget and do the boards and commissions later? Boards and commissions now? Okay. Not to push you off, Jim, but we're gonna go do boards and commissions now. Valerie, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Santos. You only have three boards to approve, so it won't take long. The first one is your Art in Public Places, and you do have ballots on your desk. There are two for, seven applicants for that. Mayor, oh, there you go. Uh, councilmember Witt voted for Michael Holland. Councilmember Bagley voted for Michael Holland. Councilmember Levison voted for Darlene Valentine. Councilmember Samori voted for Jody De, Pamela, Jody.
Okay.
Uh, council, uh, Mayor Protem Santos voted for Michael Holland. And councilmember Finley voted for Michael Holland. Michael Holland received four votes, and so he'll be on the AIPP. Uh, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, we have one alternate position open and one applicant for that. You can either vote using the ballots or with a motion.
Councilmember Finley?
I move that we appoint Brian Looser to the Board of Adjustments.
It's been moved in seconded by councilmember Samori. All those in favor, raise your hand. Passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent.
And your last board is the Longmont Housing Authority. You have one regular position open and three applicants. Councilmember Bagley voted for Wendell Pickett. Mayor Protem Santos voted for Heath Carroll. Councilmember Levison voted for Eve Canfield. Councilmember Finley voted for Wendell Pickett. Councilmember Samori voted for Heath Carroll. And councilmember Witt voted for Wendell Pickett. So we have three votes for Wendell Pickett. That is a majority of those present. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, should we just do the appointment for CML as well? Or, no, wait, that's, and also call for legislative priorities. That's a little bit more detailed. Budget. We tried to put you off, Jim. Hi, Jim.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Santos, number City Council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. And could not put this off any longer. We're here to talk about the proposed budget for 2014. We're just calling up PowerPoint here, but just to get us started, I wanted to remind you all that you do not need to give us any direction on anything that we're bringing to your attention tonight. You don't need to do that tonight, at least. Uh, we will return to you on October 1st at a study session and ask you for final direction regarding the budget. And so, items that we're talking about tonight as far as council one-time expenses and, and the ongoing expenses of one-time commitment, um, again, you do not need to direct us tonight. Reminder, if there is anything that you would like for us to bring back to you at a, um, subsequent meeting regarding the budget, please let us know and we will schedule it on one of the next two weeks of presentations. So, with that, tonight I will be doing a summary, uh, brief summary of the general fund budget for 2014 from a high level. And, uh, we will get into the one-time expenses that I was just referring to and then finish off with a summary, brief summary for the Public Safety Fund for 2014. Okay, so, uh, the 2014 overall proposed budget, it's a $229.4 million budget, so it's just slightly more, $800,000 more than what the, uh, 2013 budget was. We have 37 funds in there, one less than last year because we combined the electric and broadband telecom utilities recently. And so we've done the same with the proposed budget. There are some, um, funds that will have a large percentage increase or decrease. And you can see that in the summary of the changes in budget totals for each fund. Comparing 2013 to 2014, that's on attachment B. And that's, can be found on page S67 in your packet tonight. So the ones that have changed in significant percentage amounts are mostly due to capital expenses or capital projects that have been budgeted in one year or the other, depending on which one was higher. If you have any questions about any individual items in any of the material we give you tonight, um, please go ahead and stop me, but I'm not going to get into that level of detail in my, my presentation. Once we give you a little bit of background on, uh, revenue projections that went into building this general fund budget, here is the sales tax performance through July of 2013. That's updated through what you received today from me regarding July's sales tax performance. We are now up 5.7% with sales tax up 6.5% and use tax up 1.4%. We made our final projections for the 2014 budget based on last month's results, which, if you might recall, we've been down in use tax throughout most of the year. We were down 2.4% last month. So that was going into part of what our projections for ending 13 are based on. Uh, we take into consideration the fact that we're expecting a decline in, uh, a further decline or, or close to total decline in, in the revenue from Twin Peaks Mall in the fourth quarter of this year. And then on top of that, we do also have some delinquent collections that were, are in our 2013 numbers that we don't expect necessarily to be repeated in 2014 in the fourth quarter. So we do anticipate some declines in use tax for that reason. And then, uh, in overall, we're trying to stay, stay conservative with our estimates so that we don't get burnt. But we project to end 2013 up 3.43%. At least that's how this budget is built. And then on top of that, for 2014, we have a combined 2.56% increase. Again, we've taken into consideration things like, uh, new retail that's been added in the city, the impacts of the fact that the mall has been operating for three quarters of the year. And in fact, now, Dillard's, Dillard's was responsible for some of our growth in, in July's, uh, revenue from sales tax. And we expect to see that again in August as well as they are liquidating their, their assets there. So, um, we expect that will be totally out of our members for 2014. And on top of that, we've also taken into consideration a growth factor based on, on economic growth projections from the state level, as well as we took into consideration the planning department's population growth and building permits. So that was really most of our driving percentages going into our, our retail growth projections. We did not anticipate or project into here any primary job loss for any of our, our sales and use tax numbers. Building permit revenue estimates, um, briefly, the 2013 budget is, um, based on 175 combined dwelling units. And through July of this year, we are at 102 dwelling units. So what the, um, planning department has projected for 2014 is a total of 282 dwelling units. And that does have some impact on general fund revenues, but not ongoing revenues. It's really impacting incremental development revenue. So the council does have a financial policy and it sets 120 dwelling units as a target above which any amount of revenue that we receive from building permits in excess of 120 starts, housing starts, is considered to be incremental development revenue. And so in that sense, we, we don't try to utilize incremental development revenue for our ongoing expenses in the general fund. So we instead program those for, for one-time type expenses. Or we could use them for ongoing expenses if we, to keep in mind that it's going to be subject to reduction in the event that the level of revenues is not sustained into the future. So we've not used that, uh, for this budget, we have not used it for any ongoing, uh, revenue for 2014. And it's $260,000 of incremental development revenue in the 2014 proposed budget based on these building permit projections. So property tax revenue, we get, uh, we get a rough estimate from the assessors' office in the middle of summer. It's what we used to put into this budget was based on a half percent increase in property taxes, which is $71,000. We will, we get an updated number, um, just in the end of August and a final number in the end of November. And that, uh, number, that $71,000 can go in either direction. So far, it's gone down. Uh, we, we think it could go in, still further in either direction between now and, and November. Uh, I think we'll be able to offset any of that decline based on any other revenue estimates that we've made, um, to the, in the budget from a, you know, conservative standpoint. But, um, it's, this happens to us every year and we just need to roll with it as we go through the budgeting process. So I talked about this last week and the city manager the week before, so I'm not going to get into a lot of the detail. Uh, the major issues with the general fund are the 2% sales and use tax allocation between the general fund and the Public Improvement Fund, the ongoing type expenses with one-year commitment. We'll look at those in detail in a few minutes. But as you know, the budget reset effort is designed to try to take care of those in future budgets. Uh, we did have a question about this last week and we did try to answer it on the fly there, but here's the breakdown of that allocation between the general fund and Public Improvement Fund. It's, um, 88.3% in the general fund and 11.7% in the Public Improvement Fund. And historically, that split was 85.15. So at least it was four years ago and that's where we would be shooting for trying to return that to in the future. And the difference is on $1,053,000 that is benefiting the general fund in 2014. What we have done in the Public Improvement Fund is we have $267,000 of projected carryover from this year's use tax revenues in excess of budget. And on top of that, uh, $560,000 transfer from the general fund to also, um, replace those revenues that are being, uh, not gained through the allocation of the sales tax. That, that allows us to, uh, continue to fund at some level the infrastructure maintenance projects. We have $827,000 from those sources in addition to the, the use tax that is budgeted within that fund. And then finally, our ongoing, ongoing type expenses with one-year commitment. Uh, we had $198,000 last year. It's $296,000 in 2014. We'll look at that in a couple of minutes in a little more detail. So getting back into looking at the general fund in a high level, it's, um, $62.7 million of ongoing revenue and expense last year. And for 2014, it's almost $64.4 million, a 2.6% increase. This $1,630,000 increase over 2013 is pretty close to exactly the amount that the 2013 budget grew over 2012. So our, our growth the last couple of years has been about 2.5%, 2.6% per year. So, um, on the expense side, there were reductions of $660,000 in ongoing expenses. And then there were increases of 2.0, almost 2.3 million dollars. And the detail on that is, again, within your packet. It's on attachment C on page S68. And that shows the changes in the ongoing expenses and ongoing revenues for the general fund. But we'll give you a little bit of highlights there. So first, taking a look at the, the reductions, some line-on reductions in base budget expenses. First up, the first item here on public safety are cuts that we made in mid-year 2013 to cover increased salaries that were added in 2013 from a reorganization. They are also shown as new expenses on the, on the expense side here. And then in community services, $55,000 of temporary wages that were reduced to benefit to some part-time employees and senior in the library. And then on top of that, we have $240,000 of parks operation reductions that you heard about in recent weeks from PWNR in regards to the efficiencies that they were able to put in place and, and in turn reduce their budget this year. And then on top of that, we have a couple more small amounts of line-on reductions in a couple of other areas. And some major, other major reductions in, in base budget expenses are, we eliminated a vacant principal planner position in the Economic Development Department. That is over $113,000 of salary and benefits. And then finally, I referred to this last week, but we were able to reduce the funding for the police and fire, old higher pension plans by $101,000 because of the funding status of their defined benefit plans there. So on increased expense sides in the general fund, we've increased our level-one type expenses, which are the expenses that, you know, we need to budget for because we're gonna, we're gonna be subjected to those expenses whether we want to pay them or not, which are things like utility increases or contract increases that were tied into. So that's $118,000. And then we have $24,000 of ongoing expenses tied to the one-time items that you will, that you see in the, uh, one-time list that we included in the packet. And then also, there's some major increases in ongoing expenses from, in the pay and benefit areas, collective bargaining pay increases of $265,000. We had step pay increases in public safety of $85,000. Master police officer is kind of like a classification increase for police officers of $27,000. And then the other pay adjustments, which, which include the reorganization costs that I referred to earlier, um, those are $182,000. to earlier, those are $182,000. Other increases in the benefit area or other expenses are workers' compensation. A lot of these are large increases compared to prior years, and I'm hoping that we won't see the same level of ongoing increases hopefully in subsequent years, but workers' compensation, $493,000. Our liability insurance, $168,000 increase. And then our health cost increases, we talked about the 9.5 percent increase in that area last week, that's $433,000 to the general fund. Defined benefit pension increase, again, we've covered that last week. Our fleet lease charges are up $386,000, and really, it's kind of getting back to the fact that last year, we kind of had a fleet lease charge holiday because of a bunch of credits that we had from reducing some of our vehicles in the general fund. So, as a result, we absorbed some credits that reduced us in the ongoing expense area, which is something we're going to try to instead use that only in the one-time area in the future, so we don't have these swings in fleet lease charges from year to year. And finally, the human service agency funding increase, 1.6 percent of ongoing revenues, that's $25,000 increase here. Decreases in ongoing revenues, the parks maintenance fee that was within the general fund was eliminated at the amount of $455,000. That's not included as part of this proposed budget, won't be within the general fund in the future. The telephone utility tax, this is an area, again, I think I referred to last week, but as a result of a decrease in hard lines, and as a result, we're down $54,000 compared to the 2013 budget, which probably was a little bit over-budgeted anyway. Administrative transfer fees are down almost $37,000 in 2014. When we were down $104,000 last year, and I think that's reflective, you notice we have a, general fund has been increasing the last couple of years, as I mentioned, a 2.5 percent increase each year, but our ATF is decreasing, and I think that's because a result of our, the fact that we've been refining how we use the methodologies for our ATF's, and as a result, in some areas, those are going downwards, even though our costs overall are going upwards. So, I think that's, you know, kind of reflecting that we're having a better ATF methodology in place. Fines and forfeits are down $31,000 in a couple of miscellaneous type fines areas like parking, library, and some court-related and weed fines and such. And then finally, we continue to decrease our interest income estimates from year to year as our returns continue to minimize. So then, on the increase side for ongoing revenue, the major item is our sales and use tax. So, those projections I gave you earlier are based on where our budget is based on, compared from one year to the next. This is just taking a look at last year's budgeted dollars for sales and use tax in the general fund compared to 2014, $1,725,000 increase because of the fact that we were so far over what last year's budget turned out being. And so, as a result, this is a 6.1 percent increase to the general fund in sales and use tax for 2014. And so, that's the major source of increase to this fund. We have some franchise fees that are reflected here that will be increasing. You'll be hearing about those rate increase proposals next week, but the revenues here for the electric and sewer are reflecting those. In the gas franchise area, I mentioned last week how hard that is to project, but this is just trying to target it at what it's coming in at this year. So, effectively, it's a 6.4 percent increase over this year's budget, but it's close to what we're running at on an actual basis at. Cable franchise increase is a slight increase of less than 4 percent, again, reflecting what we're seeing the actual revenues come in at. Recreation fees, we're not increasing recreation fees, instead, we're trying to project closer to what the actual activity is reflecting, so that's a $27,000 increase in revenue. But we do have increase in union reservoir fees, so that you'll also be hearing about those next week, but that's in here, $30,000 with an offsetting expense of the same amount. And then finally, the property tax number that I referred to earlier. So, overall, again, we're $1.63 million increase in revenues and expenses, which is 2.6 percent increase. This here is a total FTE comparison over the last, I guess, 11, 12 years now, so going back to the 2003 budget, which is kind of like where we peaked with our growth and our revenues, and where we kind of peaked in the amount of FTE that we had at that point in time. We've been up and down since then, but this is just showing you that we're actually pretty close to where we were 11 years ago with total FTE. That's inclusive of the fact that we added a public safety tax that added 41 employees, and we've, you know, created some new benches in some areas and cut back in others, and you can tell it underneath some areas like in water, wastewater, and you've heard before about the efforts in those areas to reduce staff, and you see those reflected in the numbers here. As well as the fact on the first line item here, general fund has had to make a number of cuts over the last 10, 11 years in staffing levels, gradually a little better at times, but this is, that's what this 36 or so FTE is reflecting. So, we'll talk a little bit about the city's reserves in the general fund. So, currently, this is, this slide is referring to what our current reserve policy is and the targets are based on the 2013 budget. So, our table reserve is set based on fiscal year spending is calculated under Tabor, and that's 5.1 percent total of the total ongoing revenues for 2013. Our emergency reserve amount, if it's, this is the targets up on top here, not the actual amounts, but the target would be at 8 percent, a little over $5 million. And then our stabilization reserve target on top of the emergency reserve is anywhere from 3 to 8 percent, which would be another 1.8 to $5 million. So, our total reserve target is 16.1 percent to 21.1 percent. So, the variance is based on how much of a stabilization reserve you would have. So, it's either 10.1 million to 13.3 million as the target for 2013. So, we have our table reserve set currently, and the amount of emergency reserves we have into 2013 is 5.5 percent on top of the table reserve, another $3.4 million. So, our total funded reserves is 10.6 percent currently. So, we're still another 5.5 percent or so below the minimum reserve target, but we have a $6.65 million reserve currently. So now, based on this new proposed budget, which raises the amount of ongoing revenues and expenses in the general fund, it sets new percentages, new amounts for the target. Table reserve doesn't change, the emergency reserves here, again, 8, 3 to 8 percent. So, the total reserve target would be 10.3 million to 13.5 million based on the 2014 budget. So, what we're doing in this budget is proposing to increase the amount that is in the reserve by a half a million. So, that increase is just a little below eight tenths of a percent. It's going to bring our total funded reserve to 11.1 percent, and we will be at 7.15 million. I don't expect you to even try to follow this slide, it took me long enough to put it together myself. So, but what this is trying to do is show you where, how we get to the amount of dollars available in our fund balance for what we use for one-time expenses. So, we begin with last year's fund balance and the adjustments that we have made to it in 2013. That takes us to a $3.369 million of fund balance available for one-time expenses. Again, we took a half a million out of that that I just referred to to go to general fund reserves, and then we have transfers coming into the general fund to offset some of the one-time expenses that are being proposed. Those transfers are $432,000. We have one-time expenses proposed in this budget of $2.34 million. So, what's happened here is we have a remaining fund balance here of $961,000 that we have not made any recommendations to use for. At this point in time, it's there, and we suggest that it remain within the general fund fund balance. We will be talking about the ongoing expenses with one-time commitment, those are not included in the proposed budget, and those do amount to $290,000 or so, and so, that, close to $300,000, but, so those would come from this dollar amount of $961,000 if the council were to decide to fund them, but they're not currently funded, but we do have fund balance available for that purpose. The general fund one-time expenses I just referred to are $2.34 million. You have this information broken down in your packet, and we updated pages S44 and S45 and sent that in with this latest packet. They were in the original budget document that you received. It was, there was a $1,500 error that we corrected in there, and so that's now reflecting the correct numbers. These are the major categories, the detail on each of these categories is included on those pages, S44 and 45. Notice, I do have the other expenses with one-year commitment shown here as zero. The amount's $296,405. They are included as well on that page S45, just for reference, but not as part of this total funded or recommended to funded number. And so, with that, I'm going, before I start with this, I'm going to take a breath and see if you have any questions on what I've just given you so far, before we get into council one-time. Okay. Everyone's following me? So, then, what we want to do is, we have $297,700 of requests for city council one-time dollars. Those dollars are included within this $2.34 million. We do have that as funded in here under the one-time services or expenses category. So, the dollars are available. We wanted to give each of these entities an opportunity to address the council on their request. So, I'm going to start in the, I guess I'll go in the order for what we have been listed here, and start with Longmont Council for the Arts, and ask Joanne Curvis to come down and take a few minutes to tell you about her request.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem and City Council, for letting me be here tonight to speak on behalf of Longmont Council for the Arts. I'd like to first start off by thanking you for your past support and continued support to the Longmont Council for the Arts. The Longmont Council for the Arts has been enhancing and elevating the quality of life in Longmont since 1985. Our nine programs in both the visual and performing arts support and inspire our artists, our students, and the community. Support from the City of Longmont is a great endorsement for our organization and enables us to leverage additional funding. The Longmont Council for the Arts has been an active partner in the development and implementation of the Arts and Entertainment District. The Arts and Entertainment District benefits the entire community, and we are only beginning to see those benefits. We are requesting city support for The Art Enthusiast, our art fund, and artists in residence. In 2013, we brought professional artists to five schools in the St. Crane Valley School District. These programs range from mosaic murals to theater-based movement and storytelling projects. Our artist-in-resident program enhances our students' education, and not just in the arts, but throughout their entire curriculum, math, reading, and writing. Our arts-integrated program improves their entire experience. Excel Energy has recognized our arts-integrated programming with support this year in 2013 and again in 2014, and they commented that we are one of the projects that is not just talking about arts-integrated program, but is doing arts-integrated programming. The Art Enthusiast is our only, is the only art-focused magazine in Longmont that shines a light on all the arts in Longmont. Our most recent issue, if you haven't gotten one, just came out. And when we put together The Art Enthusiast, it's not just about the Longmont Council for the Arts, it's about all of the arts in Longmont. In this issue, you'll see a big article on the citywide Day of the Dead program with all of the organizations and galleries that are participating, along with the museum. And we also have articles on the Firehouse Art Center's films and the museum, just to name a few, as well as our calendar of activities. So, and our art fund allows us to support art outreach and creative development for our artists and arts organizations. The Longmont Council for the Arts sees ourselves as a leader in this arts community, and how do we enhance not just our own organization, but our artists and other arts organizations? We are requesting support for 2014 of $15,000, and if you have any questions, I'm open to questions. If not, I also would like to take this time to invite you to our party on September 19th, which is our major fundraiser for Longmont Council for the Arts. So, thank you. It is at Brookside Gardens in Berthoud on Thursday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Artists in actions, miniature masterpiece, dancing for the arts, wine and beer tasting, and it all supports our programming. Thank you.
The next is the Longmont Community Justice Partnership, and I wanted to point out, this list's $180,000, it's a request. Actually, there is an additional amount of $20,000 that would come from the public safety fund, so the total really actually is $200,000, and we will need to add that $20,000 if it gets directed to do so, it's not currently within the proposed budget. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Stan Garnett to address LCJP.
Good evening, my name's Stan Garnett, I'm the district attorney for the 20th Judicial District. Appreciate the chance to be here tonight and to talk briefly about the Longmont Community Justice Project. I've been on the board of LCJP now for almost three years, and it's a terrific group. As you can imagine, in my line of work, I get asked to be on a lot of boards. I'm pretty picky about the ones that I choose to be on, and I've gotten on this board at the invitation of Chief Mike Butler, and I've been very impressed by the group that, by the work that LCJP does. Let me give you just a couple of statistics to put it in context, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got. LCJP, as you probably know, has served the Longmont community now for over 18 years. We appreciate very much the strong support of the Longmont City Council and municipal government, and the partnership that we've had with the Longmont Police Department. Each year, the demand for restorative justice services through LCJP has increased, and that, in fact, I believe, and I know Chief Butler believes, has increased public safety in Longmont. LCJP, as you probably know, through restorative justice practices, is a program that permits offenders to work with those that they have injured or caused problems with in the criminal justice system, and to engage in restorative practices that help to provide restitution, help them to be accountable for what they've done, but also, and most importantly, for those of us in my line of work, keeps them out of the criminal justice system. In fact, LCJP, through the last several years, has become really a model for programs across the state of Colorado and the entire United States, because it's a program that's shown how we can use thoughtful, restorative practices to help to save money for municipalities, and also to provide services that help to keep the community safe. We have received a number of high-profile cases recently, we get referrals from the Longmont Police Department, we get referrals from my office. To give you just a couple of examples, you may remember the vehicular assault on some geese that happened not too long ago by some high school students, that was put through LCJP. They did a terrific job of handling that process. Most recently, the vandalism case involving Mountain View Cemetery is being put through LCJP in restorative justice. We've had 54 cases with 95 referred students recently. We have only a 10 percent recidivism rate, which again is terrific, because often, people that go through the criminal justice system have a much higher recidivism. go through the criminal justice system have a much higher recidivism rate. So I'm here on behalf of the board to tell you that first, we very much appreciate the commitment that the Longmont City Council and municipal government has made to LCJP and we ask you to continue that commitment in the future. A final point I would make is that my judicial district, which is the 20th Judicial District, is part of a pilot with three other judicial districts to use restorative justice practices with diversion, with juvenile diversion programs. And this has been put in place by the state legislature, signed into law by the governor, and this pilot is based off of the model that LCJP has set, both for the Longmont community and for the state of Colorado. So you, through your efforts in the past, have really been a leader in implementing this and helping this program be successful. We appreciate that and we'd like to have your continued support. Happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. My only question, it's a great program and of course I'm all for funding it, but it seems like it should be funded out of the Public Safety Fund. Is there a reason that it's not?
Um, great, I was gonna say, I don't know.
Mayor Protem Santos, members of council. So actually, we've been funding this for a number of years and prior to the Public Safety Tax coming into place. And the Public Safety Tax is intended to be for enhanced public safety services. So the $20,000 is being paid from there because that's over and above the 180 that was in place originally before the tax coming from the general fund. The idea is that the new tax wasn't supposed to be just taking the place of things that were being spent or paid for from the general fund previously.
But isn't that, wouldn't that be a common sense place for it to come from? As is part of public safety?
It certainly is a public safety tax expense.
And it does enhance public safety?
Well, it was already in place, so we don't consider it enhancement. If, I think if we were to do that, we'd be kind of playing games with the voters, saying, give us a new tax, but we're using it for some old expenses, so.
So the entire budget of public safety comes from that tax?
No, actually, only about 15% of the public safety budget comes from that tax.
So couldn't you use that other money in the budget for this?
Other money from the, from the public safety fund?
That is not part of the tax?
Well, in fact, we are using general fund dollars for this, but we're using one-
Public safety budget, only a portion of it is the sales tax. The other portion that is not sales tax, couldn't that be used to fund this?
That's really what is happening here, is that the general fund is using one-time dollars, so the other-
Okay.
So I guess the, so what would happen is, is if we use the existing general fund, public safety budget, we would then have 180,000 in public safety that we would have to deal with. So the example that reminded me is if we had a position that existed before the Public Safety Improvement Tax was voted on, that position could not be funded with it, but if we added a position after, that one could.
Councilmember Whit.
I've got a cunning plan. I've seen restaurants do this. They close down for a day and then they come back. Anyway, we'll not do that because that's rude, but I've seen it happen before, so if ever we're in a pinch, just saying.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. The, I guess the speaking, not a question, Mr. Garnett, just being in the same legal arena as our fine district attorney. My experience seeing it from the other side as a defense attorney is that regardless of where the money comes from, I'm all for this. It's basically focusing on the children in our community, people who do stupid things. They just weren't thinking and before they get a criminal record and get on a path of becoming career criminals, the system really takes them aside, helps them understand what they did and the impact it had on the victims, and you don't see them come back. On the contrary, my experience has been when it's all said and done, they've written letters, they've talked to the victims, and they go, I'm so glad that I was exposed to this. And then they get on the straight and narrow and they don't come back. And so I, I look at that money being a great investment, meaning it'll save us a lot more money down the long run, or down the, down the, long-term, down the road, and so-
Lose clients.
And I will lose clients, Mr. Garnett. But that's a, that's a good thing for our community.
I'll see what I can do about that.
Thank you, yeah, you know, I'm at, well, yeah, thank you.
And I'll chime in here. Councilmember Bagley, I would, I would agree 100% with what you said, that's money well-spent. My concern is, and my question, is that I've seen LCJP come several years being on council and I have the financial review on the LCJP website, that, and I've asked Deb Whittleman, I know she's no longer the executive director anymore, but it seems that the city of Longmont is the sole big contributor to funds, to LCJP. The county only gives 20,600, school district maybe 20,000. Has there been any other push to get other funding from, you know, the school district, the county? Any other, you know, to help us, you know, we're, we're having some budgetary constraints. Is there any other opportunities out there to help us at least with this one-time funding?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This has been an issue of great significance in the board. As you may know, my background before I became district attorney was I've been in the private sector for almost 25 years at a private law firm. My view is that we should have more private funding for LCJP and that we should work hard to tap into resources in the private sector, both in Longmont and in the greater Boulder County area. We're working hard to do that and also to connect with other government sources. One thing I would note that's quite exciting is in connection with this program where we're a pilot, one of four judicial districts statewide, there will be state funding available next year for restorative justice practices that are used on youth. I'm hoping that some of that can be made available to LCJP and in, in the long run, together with increased private sector funding, reduce the amount that we're asking from Longmont. One, one point I would make-
And don't get me wrong, as Councilmember Bagley said, and I think we would all agree, and I have, I have been in literature with, in the LCJP literature saying, this is a fantastic program. The recidivism rate is phenomenal. It doesn't get any better than this, but it, you know, this is one-time funding that, you know, if I could put it in somewhere for ongoing funding at a lesser rate, you know, it would be great, but there's times that, you know, everyone that's coming knows that this is one-time funding, it's not always guaranteed. It's, you know, it, it, it's hard sometimes.
I hear ya and all I can assure you and the council is that the board is working hard to diversify its funding base and to put itself in a position where we won't be asking for as much from the city of Longmont. To put in context a little bit how important what this program, how important it's been to Boulder County, some of you may have read about the case involving the death of the elk in Boulder, which you should be very happy, it's not a Longmont case.
We are.
Additionally, the drunk horseback rider is also not a Longmont case, which I spent most, it could be. I spent most of the day on that. We're just glad that that fellow was not, was not riding an elk, regardless. The defendant in that case who stepped forward and pled guilty and taken responsibility for what happened has committed to engage in a restorative justice project, process with the community, Mapleton Hill and Boulder, that was most affected by that. He will be modeled after what LCJP does. And I just think all of you should know, when I go to the legislature, when I deal with the governor, when I deal with the legislature, people consistently point to LCJP as really a model of what communities need to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Finley's question was the question that I had the first year I was on council and saw this budget. In fact, I think the first year I was on council, looking at the budget, the proposal was $200,000 and that 20,000 hadn't come out of public safety until we had this little conversation about we could take it out of the public safety tax. So, you know, we have been mindful of this issue in the past. Mr. Garnett, do you know whether or not the program that was based in Longmont High School with LCJP, has it helped with the whole spectrum of what happens in schools as far as truancy and bullying and all other kinds of issues? What can you tell me about how that program is going and do they expect to model in other schools?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to Councilmember Lovison's question, it has had a tremendous impact on suspensions, on truancy issues and on other issues within the school environment. A drop of about 30% in suspensions that is tied directly to restorative justice practices. As some of you may know, I was on the Boulder Valley School Board for eight years and sat through many meetings like this that went much later than I bet you guys go tonight. And I'm committed to getting the Boulder Valley School District much more involved in LCJP and restorative justice because it really works well in dealing with the kinds of behavior and other issues that occur within a school. So it has made a difference and it's made a difference on good things in terms of helping kids be responsible for misbehavior issues and also helping to keep them in school and to restore the relationships that are broken when kids involve in misbehavior.
And I think that if it's finding a cost benefit to the school district, it would be nice to see if the school district could maybe help out, you know, whether it would be maybe paying a quarter-time staff person to help with some of the programming or some other tapping into the resources. So I guess it'll be both your job and ours to suggest that to school board members when we see them.
I'll take that message back to the board. We do have a school district administrator on our board and again, as I indicated, we're committed to diversifying the funding base. We've recently gone through a management switch and we're committed to moving forward at this point.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And just a quick question, does Boulder, what's the equivalent of the Boulder project called? And how much does the city of Boulder donate to that project?
Frankly, Councilmember Bagley, the city of Boulder is lagging behind. I'm sure if any of them are watching this, I'll get emails in the morning. They, frankly, the city of Boulder has not been nearly as proactive as the city of Longmont in its commitment to restorative justice and moving forward. I'm gonna continue to do what I can to change that, but it's not doing as much as Longmont, but I don't have in front of me the exact statistics.
So this is specifically a Longmont city program, all dollars are going to our citizens?
That's correct and I, however, both myself and others who are involved in these issues statewide continually use LCJP as an example of what other communities can do. And I know SS Park, for example, has recently modeled this program, which is quite impressive off of LCJP.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is the Regional Air Quality Council request for $11,000 and Meg Alderton will address you on that.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, Mayor Protem Santos and members of council. My name is Meg Alderton. I'm the communications manager for the Regional Air Quality Council. First, I'd like to thank you for your funding support in past years and for having me here today as you consider continued support for the RAC in 2014. The RAC is requesting $11,000 from the city for 2014, which is the same amount provided for the city for the past three years to continue work towards our mission. As you're probably aware, the region has been out of compliance with federal standards for ground-level ozone pollution since 2007 and the RAC is working with CDPHE and local governments to bring our region back into compliance. To do that, we have a number of specific programs in place, one of the most critical of which is our Ozone Aware Outreach and Education Program, which has a two-fold mission, one, to build awareness about the problem, and two, to motivate people to change their behaviors to help reduce ozone. This program, of course, relies heavily on partnerships with local governments like Longmont to help us get the word out. In fact, you may have noticed some of our colorful ozone-aware tip banners at the library and city and recreation centers this summer. They've provided tips on reducing ozone pollution and introduced a new ozone calculation tool called the ozometer. Additionally, we are, of course, continuing our work for, to reduce diesel fuel emissions through our Clean Air Fleets Program, which provides information on and funding for diesel retrofit technologies, GPS, and alternatively-fueled vehicles to reduce emissions in public and private fleets. The city of Longmont actually participated in this program in 2011 and at that time was the beneficiary of $94,000 worth of vehicle improvements. That included two hybrid retrofits, a new hybrid truck, a new hybrid Digger Derrick, and 28 global positioning systems. You may also recall, when we visited last year, we were in the process of developing a web-based air quality toolkit for local governments. This provides local government staffs and elected officials information on strategies to improve air quality. We have completed this and posted the guidance to our website earlier this spring and are hoping that you guys are finding it useful. Finally, we've recently partnered with the Colorado Energy Office to develop a new program called Charge Ahead Colorado. This program offers significant funding to local governments for electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure. We are currently taking applications for this funding and we're very hopeful that Longmont will apply. In closing, the critical support we receive from Longmont and other local governments has made all of our programs possible and we're very grateful for your continued partnership. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
I want to have any questions. Councilmember Lovison.
Hi. I would like to know a little bit more about that Charge Ahead Colorado grant and then, and then what's the participation of RAC with the, are you administering the grant or just helping facilitate the marketing?
It's my understanding that we are in partnership with the Colorado Energy Office administering the grants. We are, of course, limited to the Seven County or Denver metro area, but CO is doing this statewide. We're in our third round of funding for this. The upcoming deadline is October 1st. Some of the other local governments that have recently gotten funding, Louisville got one in electric vehicle station, Superior got two, and Adams County got one electric vehicle and one station in the last round of funding.
And so is the grant just to the Seven metro region area or is it just to, is it statewide, but there's a certain amount of money set aside for the Seven County region?
The latter.
Okay. And so I guess, so noted, another grant we can apply to.
Exactly.
Thank you for showing us the money.
We are applying for that grant.
Great, glad to hear it.
Anyone else?
Well, Meg, I've been one of the biggest critics of RAC in the last several years because I, you know, I was, especially in 2011, show us what our $11,000 got us. And to see that, you know, $94,000 worth of retrofits, you know, we're still within that funding gap, a funding area of what $11,000 for three years has gotten us. I would like, and every, every little bit I hear about the RAC on 8:50 when I'm getting ready to take my girls to school, I haven't seen too much information in town. I'm in the library a little, you know, somewhat. I would like to see, one of, one of seven, one of six tonight. I don't know where we're at with the alternative fuels, stations, if, how the city can, if we're reaching out to RAC or RAC is reaching out to us about having, what we need to do. I know Firestone has one, if Firestone has one already, you know, we should, we should have already had one years ago. You know, I'll talk to Mayor Hour about that later. But, you know, I, if we continue to fund RAC, I, I still would like to see, you know, a better presence and, you know, I'm still not seeing it. But we're still within that window of $94,000 that we're chipping away at.
Well, we are certainly committed to an increased presence and work with your staff to do that.
Okay. Is anyone else? Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I guess my question is, the, just, the, the question is, so what do we get for $11,000?
I guess my question is, the, just, the, the question is, so what do we get for $11,000? Just in a nutshell, if we, let me put it this way, if we didn't give you $11,000, how would that impact our city, if at all?
Well, that's an excellent question.
Thank you.
You know, I think that you would certainly still have access to our programs, but that our programs are funded by a collective group of governments and so the less money we have, the less money we can give and...
And how much are the other cities giving?
Um, you know, I would have to...
Is it more or less than $11,000?
Uh, some are giving more and some are giving less. Our request is based on a Dr. Cog allocation formula that takes into account property valuation assessment and population.
And then what, what do other councils typically do? Give what you ask?
Uh, most do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wood.
I think we generally come out ahead on this scenario. We, we give, but we get a lot more in return. So we're, it's a good investment, is what I'll say.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood.
And I would, I'll jump on that and say, we have now.
Yes.
In my opinion. So, thanks, Meg.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next is Longmont Sister Cities Association, so I'll invite Sam Safi to come up and address you again, so in case you have any questions from him.
Maybe I should have not talked during the public event, but thank you again for your support and the money that we have requested is a portion of our income. We have, we also do volunteer work as well as we do fundraising for scholarships, even though we have lost one of our source of income, which was Rhythm on the River. We used to sell tickets. We had 75 volunteers who worked there and we lost that opportunity, but we have replaced a small portion of it. We are going to, we are working at CU selling food. So we want our students to have fun and enjoy the summer. So please feel free to ask any questions if you, if there is any questions or comments.
Anyone have any questions? Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I guess, I guess I've only got one concern and that is that I look at the Longmont Sister Cities Association as an opportunity to expand our vision a little bit and understand that we're part of a global community, specifically giving our youth and the youth of our sister cities the opportunity to interact and, and understand that our world is a little bit bigger than the borders of our own town and our own state and our own country. One, one concern I have and that I would ask, and I'm only one of six tonight, one of seven, but it was recently brought to my attention that there might be other cities that people are coming more than once. And I look at it as an opportunity to allow our youth to go and experience. And once they've had it turned, then other students should be allowed the opportunity to do so. And so we're opening up our community to receive these students. We're asking the other communities to open up their homes to receive ours. I guess I would ask that as the president, that you talk with the board to just find out if in fact there are kids coming more than once and if that opportunity shouldn't be given to other children. And so that has been expressed. I don't want to go into more detail, but I would like to see as many students from overseas coming as possible before giving people a second shot, if that makes sense.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, we will definitely look into it.
That was my question. Will you look into that?
Definitely.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Since Sister Cities, and I've had the privilege to be the liaison for the Sister Cities, lost that income from Rhythm on the River, they can't apply to do that again, isn't that correct? I mean, you could get it back next year, right?
I was told, I'm not familiar with the contract, but I was told we lost it for three years.
For three years? Okay, so we have to figure out how to make up that money for three years. Did you know that, that that money would need to be made up when Joe wrote the letter?
I don't know that exactly, so.
Yeah. I think it's a great program and, and I think we should all help and think about that when we award those kind of contracts to others, if we're hurting ourselves by doing that. I would just mention that in case another opportunity comes up like that for you and Sister Cities. And I, I fully support this program.
Councilmembers, morning.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I fully support the program as well and I think it's a great cultural experience for the children from Japan, Mexico and the United States, especially Colorado, to exchange cultures and traditions. The one thing I'd like to see if we might be able to expand or take advantage of is potentially some more economic development between the Sister Cities. Are there industries, are there businesses, are there companies that could benefit coming here or from here, going there or selling? I, I know that's not necessarily probably the charter of Sister Cities, but maybe we can look at expanding or investigating those opportunities.
Thank you. Yes, we started talking about it with your city managers, recent appointment, we started talking about it, but no, we have not really talked to any particular companies abroad to invite them here, but maybe in the future.
Anyone else?
Well, having been to both Sister Cities in Chino and Guzman and having just recently a president at Orozco here, you know, I thought there was a really nice dialogue and potential about, you know, sending maybe a few members of staff or maybe, or even a couple of businesses, whether they're very tough to businesses, maybe potentially talking to the LAEC and, you know, another, I think the last economic exchange was at least 25, 30 years ago to at least Chino, but at least one to Guzman to see if that's, that's a possibility. Talking with one of the council members from Guzman, it seemed like they were at least open to it. I know when Mayor Baum and I went to Chino for, for a very short duration, I think it was a four day trip, they were at least interested in that as well. So anything that, anything's possible. So this is a great, I'm a past liaison to the Sister Cities Board. This is a great program and I would encourage anyone, there's, and as with all these funding requests, these are all great organizations and if anyone in the public can, I'm sure there's ways to donate to each and every one of these, so I would encourage them to do so. Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Next, Longmont Symphony Orchestra and Doug Ray is here for that.
Doug Ward. But we all know you, Doug.
Unfortunately, right. There's a story about that, too. Mayor Protem Santos, members of council, Doug Ward, president of the board of the Longmont Symphony, here to express our appreciation along with the other great organizations for the funding spend provided. I talked for just a moment about the Fourth of July concert. I think, at least for me, and I know I've talked to a number of other members in the city and as well city council, I think it's one of the marquee events of the city and we're just, we just feel privileged to be able to participate in it and it's, it seems to grow each year and it's a lot of fun for the symphony. This past year, we had a recommendation to kind of expand the program a little bit and so invited the Longmont Youth Symphony to participate on the program and that turned out a great experience for the kids in the Longmont Youth Symphony and I think they're very favorably received by the community as well. So we feel like, at least a great, we're grateful to be able to participate in it. I think that investment is a, is a great investment and a marquee event of the city. In terms of the $20,000 for Vance Brand, you know, our, one of, one of the things that we're, we're experiencing is the symphony, which is a little bit different than symphonies around across the country, is we're actually experiencing some growth. So if you look from attendance from 2010 to an 11 concert year to our 2012, 2013 concert year, we went from 5,100 patrons attending those concerts to 6,100, so a thousand more patrons. Some of those are, are patrons that we bring in through the circle of care and others who are served of it and disadvantage a community, but, but also, as you well know, as the school board seeks to balance their expenses as well, the facility gets a little bit more expensive as we go forward, but nonetheless, we have a really good relationship with them and we appreciate your support in that regard. Just some general comments, you know, I think I mentioned last time I was here that we focused in three areas in the symphony. One is just in terms of the concert hall and the quality of the performance in the concert hall, and I think that's manifest by the fact that we've got more people coming and we're getting a lot more feedback from that. Second area is, is in terms of the board and our executive directors, we're looking more at how we can benefit beyond the concert hall so that we can use our resources, skills of the, of the symphony members and the board to reach out beyond the concert hall. And then the final area is, is in mutually beneficial collaborations and I'd like to just mention, you know, just a couple of things in regards with those. So I've talked with many of you about opportunities to do things beyond the concert hall and some of you gave us some recommendations. For example, Mayor Protem Santos suggests about getting with the youth center and Christina and I have met once, we tried to meet this week, we'll meet again, and they have a recommendation for a, for a program they'd like the symphony to help start in the youth center. And so we're, we actually got a little core funding for that and now we're working for, for finding somebody to, to help out with that. John Clayton and some patrons in our symphony from our surveys suggested we have youth symphony members from the community do a little ensemble presentation for concerts and, and so we're implementing that. And we're also doing some things with Kay and Wes in anticipation of the opening of the new auditorium, the Stewart Auditorium, and so we're doing some things to foreshadow concerts that we want to do there with ensemble kind of sized concerts. So we, we feel like that we're, we're doing a lot of things which are putting, putting benefit in the community and we hope to be able to kind of continue to do that with other programs. Just as a last comment, we met with Kimberly and for a lot of years, we tried to figure out to do something at Festival on Main that made sense and, and was beneficial for the aunt and beneficial for us and we struggled and then never really came up with anything. So when we met with Kimberly, she said, do a petting zoo, a instrument petting zoo. So we did an instrument petting zoo and if any of you stopped by, kids, adults, everybody had a great time coming by, picking up a horn or a string instrument or something. And so we hope, hope it added to the event as well. So anyway, again, an expression of appreciation. We hope that we're serving the community in, in return for the investment you all make and as well as the, the community makes in the symphony. So entertain any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Councilmember Lovison.
So Doug, how much more expensive has Vance Brand got to rent for the symphony for the, how many concerts do you do at Vance Brand?
We do six concerts and then the two, the two Nutcracker and I, I believe in the period of time that I've been involved, it's probably up about 5,000 a year. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, the change in terms of, well, you're certainly aware of the change in terms of how it's administered, but also they've taken and are charging for individual services. So as they've broken down those services and they're now charging each of the users, the specific services that are used and that kind of thing, so it's changed the charging a little bit. But probably, I'd guess about 5,000 over the period that I've been involved, like six years.
And from visiting Vance Brand for a couple of concerts last year, I really haven't seen that there's been a lot of reinvestment in Vance Brand as far as, you know, the seats continue to deteriorate a bit every year and I don't know if they've updated the sound system recently, but you know, sometimes it's not as, there, I noticed a couple of little glitches, but you know, that, that happens. But I'm just wondering, you know, at what point would it become cost prohibitive for the symphony to continue to be in that large a venue? You know, would it, is there going to be at some point a decision you guys are going to have to make around how many big concerts can you afford to do there and then having other venues in town?
That's, that's certainly one of the considerations for sure is, you know, as we, certainly as the Stewart Auditorium opens with 250 seats, won't be able to do a full symphony concert there, but certainly a chamber sized event may be possible. So going forward, that, that will be a consideration. We have about, you know, average, you can do the math, somewhere around, what, 600, 700 patrons per, per concert, so.
And have you kept ticket prices pretty steady too?
Yes. Yeah, we, we raised them two, two seasons ago was I think the last time we touched the ticket prices generally.
I imagine a lot of people appreciate on limited entertainment budgets that you held on ticket prices too.
Well, we do and it's a great value, you know, if you look at compared to the Boulder Phil or the Boulder Orchesters, or the Boulder Symphony Orchestra, those, their, their tickets are somewhat more expensive.
Yeah, well, I thank you for keeping musicians employed.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I just want to say that I know people who come back to Longmont to celebrate the Fourth of July specifically so that they can go to that concert and also the fireworks. They, they make it a point to come back to Longmont if they've lived here in the past or have visited here, they come back and, and I think a great deal of that is, is due to the, the concert on the Fourth of July and really appreciate what you do and I, I think it brings tourists here and I think that it just really does foster our community spirit, so appreciate what you do.
Thank you. And it's a lot of fun. We really enjoy it for sure.
Councilmember Bagley.
I actually have a question for staff and process. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, I know as I said, I can get out of queue.
If, okay.
The, I guess my question for staff is, it just dawned on me while we were having this conversation, so this is a total of $300,000 and it dawned on me that it's 2014 request for council one time, which isn't even a half a percent of the overall general fund. And we're having some great conversations over each of these items, but what makes these items different than the other $64 million in the budget? Meaning why don't we have the same conversation? I can just, I mean, why aren't we talking about how many policemen we have and how much we, you know, fire and why are we talking about these? What's the theory? Is it to make us feel special or is there something special about this?
Mayor Protem Santos, Councilman Bagley, great question. In fact, when we were finishing up, I was going to point out that, that these dollars, and I did make reference to this last week, but this 300, or 300,000 or so of dollars is part of our budget reset gap currently. But many of these, these dollars used to be, some of these are more recent requests, but most of these dollars used to be a part of our ongoing budget. And then we had to make adjustments and we couldn't afford to fund them with ongoing dollars. And so instead we changed them to a status where the council would decide whether they wanted to allocate some of the one-time dollars that was available for these requests. And so we have taken to this approach of having this annually done where the request is made by each of these organizations.
That's, I'm sorry.
Just, just to finish, next year, I certainly hope our budget process is different, not to say that it would exclude this process, but in, in bringing in the prioritization process into our decision making, we will be looking at a lot of the things you just talked about, us not looking at, at the other $64 million part of the budget. Well, we, in fact, we do want you to look at that as, as well as possibly the one-time expenses, so.
But it's the gap.
But this is, well, this isn't just because it's the gap, it's been like this ever since we pushed it out of the ongoing expenses.
And Councilmember Bagley, so those akin to the...
And Councilmember Bagley, so those akin to the housing human services, you know, when they come with their requests to that board, which you're liaison to, they have their requests, they know it's a one, basically a one-time. They, some of it's ongoing, but they understand it's a, potentially could be a one-time ask, depending on the decision of council.
Understood. I just, if I wouldn't have asked that right now, I wouldn't have paid attention at all to the LDDA, so...
Well...
Now you've answered my question.
And I want to reiterate what Jim said, as we move into prioritization, and if you remember the software that we showed you all where it had level one, level two, the intent of that is actually to expand this conversation to the broader budget.
And as we move forward, if, we would love to see us, we include these back in ongoing as they were prior and reduce the gap, but at the same time, that'll bring those into that prioritization process, so it'll be interesting to see how that works forward. And you could, we'll probably have discussion going forward whether these are appropriate for ongoing or one-time, because I think some of them go either way, but they, for now, are considered part of the total reset gap.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. But we also still have a choice here. We could decide we're not funding any of these organizations, and we could take that $297,700 and say, "We don't want to have any park operations and maintenance fee added to the utility bills for everybody." So we do have choices still in, you know, what we do with this one-time money.
That is correct.
Correct?
You have choices, except that we would recommend that you not use one-time money to offset ongoing expenses.
Right, but, you know, some of us want to try to close some gaps here, too. And, you know, I'm throwing that out there, you know, devil's advocate, because I don't really see that we would, you know, not have support for the Fourth of July concert, which is our community event, part of the community event celebration for the holiday.
But let's, you know, and I see that reason of thinking, but this is, again, I've always remembered that adage, one-time money should not go on for ongoing expenses, so if we can get back to the...
Right, but, you know, we're having that in general discussion.
Okay, so next, actually, if you want to pay attention or not, is the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and actually Kimberly McKee is out of town this week at a conference, so you got me. So what I'm going to do is, well, no comment. So there's two requests here, and this has actually been in the city's general fund budget for quite a long time, over 10 years, but these two requests, $5,000 for the holiday lighting program and $17,800 for supportive events, basically Festival on Main. We are actually going to have Kimberly here next week looking at the whole DDA budget, so if you did want to have questions of her for this purpose, she'll certainly be here for that. Meantime, it's just me.
Jim? Is there any reason why the DDA can't cover this within their existing budget?
That's Kimberly's answer, but I think there's, I mean, I have an opinion, I guess the DDA may be better able to do that now than they were previously, depending on the decisions that are made with their operating mill levy. On the other hand, if I look at it historically, that budget has been strapped, certainly has been, we've been actually using interest revenues from the TIF to be able to sustain it moving forward, and it certainly wouldn't have had the ability to do that in the past.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Well, if you look at the TIF going forward, we're not going to be generating as much revenue from it as we had been in the past. If you look at the $5,000 for the holiday lights, there's a lot of people that come down and enjoy that, and they actually spend money, and we earn tax money from that as well. As far as the events, if you look at the one signature event, Festival on Main Street, which brings down 17,000 people...
Twenty thousand. You're higher.
So, well, let's just say 17,000, because it makes it, 17,800, makes it simple math for me, we're contributing a dollar per person to that event, so that's not a lot to ask.
No, and I understand, I just wonder why it's just not in the...
Well, because there's not enough revenue, and there will be less revenue going into the future because of the production in the TIF.
Great explanation, thank you.
Okay, moving on, the Firehouse Arts Center, and Jessica Koeman's here to address that.
I am very excited to be here, representing the Firehouse as our executive director. On behalf of our Board of Directors and over 20 dedicated volunteers and almost 100 members, I want to thank you guys for your support of the Firehouse. We kind of like to think of it as a gift from the city to the city. It's a beautiful building, as you all know, and it really truly is a gift to Longmont, so we are here asking for support of $8,000 for our education program. We do exhibitions and education. We want to expand our education program based on what we hear from people. Adults and teens and children ask us for more classes. So what we'd like to do is actually expand our teen program and offer an after-school program for teens. We have a plan to do a focus group of teens, ask them what they want, and devise a program from, made from, by teens for teens, kind of a support system for those that are interested in the arts, that need the additional support of other artists from other schools, and just kind of, you know, creating an opportunity for support and networking for teenagers. We'd also like to do some kids' camps throughout the summer to provide more art to more kids. Our SAE program, Saturday Art, Afternoon Art Experience, is ages five through 12. We do that two Saturdays out of the month, we'd like to do it every Saturday. We also have a lot of interest from adults for art education. We honestly get somebody calling every other week, wondering about adult programs, so I think there's a need for amateur artists that want to learn from professional artists. We also get artists who want to teach classes. So setting all of this up and kind of building a program around it that, you know, can really foster this environment of creativity is what we want to do. We also would like to do some updates to some of the facilities in the classroom, and then, of course, you know, there's always supplies and, you know, paying the teachers for their time, so that's where our $8,000 request comes from.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So you are in a building that the city owns, and you operate out in that building, so you have no rent. Okay, and the programs that you're saying you want to expand, we have youth services that do a lot of those things, and art programs, we have those offered at the senior center, so are we not recreating the wheel with this funding?
I think it's just responding to the demand of people asking us for it, and asking us as a, you know, an art center and a gallery, you know, displaying, you know, art exhibitions and supporting other artists through our artist membership program, just, you know, applying to the demand of people asking for it.
Do you ever refer to those other organizations?
Yeah, oh yeah, sure, yeah, because we're not offering some of these adult classes right now, so, you know, yeah, definitely.
Now, you came last year asking for funding, is that correct?
Yeah, through the, before the budgetary thing, it was a, yeah.
Okay, all right, and now, I am just wondering, but can you explain some of the things that you've done, outreach to the community, and just as we were talking about with LCJP and building their donor base, et cetera, what are some of the things that your organization has done to increase other sources of income for your organization?
We focused this year a lot on membership, and we've been able to maintain our membership level and get new members and retain members, so we've focused on membership for one, and the benefits of membership. We've also been approaching businesses and working on collaborations with, you know, getting specific with some of the exhibitions and finding sponsors that are willing to, you know, sponsor a specific event and collaborate. We did a film festival this summer, the first ever in Longmont, as far as I know, and raised over $1,500 for, you know, our own program, so we've got a lot of stuff in the works, you know, and it takes just kind of piecing out which ones are the most important. So like I said, we focused on membership just because that's kind of our heart, you know, that's, those are the people that are really supporting, supporting us.
Okay, and I think you mentioned that you have 100 members right now, and is that an increase of how many over the year? How's your success rate?
Well, I mean, and it's hard to gauge, everybody gauges success in a different way. I gauge success by attendance and how many people are coming through our doors and the feedback I receive from them. So our membership level, it has always been around, you know, 75, 80, as far as I know, so it's been increased a little bit, but it does fall off sometimes during the year. It's an annual membership.
Okay.
So I, really what I gauge is kind of the success, and I feel like we've been very successful this year in introducing some new programs. Our film festival, for example, was a success, and attendance to our events has improved, and attendance overall at the gallery has improved. And I also feel like, you know, on an advertising type of thing, word of mouth, I hear a lot of really great things, and people have been really positive about some of the changes that we've made, so...
All right, well, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. My guess, my question, and this isn't to beat you up, it's just that I'm curious and can give you the chance to answer. So if I give you two buckets, bucket A is a gallery, and bucket B is teaching and education, and I give you 100 points, how would you allocate those points between those two buckets? If I were to ask you, what's the purpose of the Firehouse Arts Center?
I think we're 50/50, actually, right in the middle, because I think with the exhibitions, that's kind of, you know, as the fire, the building itself kind of has that, it's such a beautiful building, it can be utilized for something like that visually, but the education side of it comes in when, you know, you have an exhibition that, you know, may be a little bit more challenging, you have to have the education on the side of that, so people understand what they're looking at and why they're looking at it. And as far as, you know, supporting, you know, the education programs, you know, like Councilmembers Whit, you know, we do have a lot of other educational programs in the city, so for me, the education side comes in related to the exhibitions, and that's why I would say it's 50/50.
Okay, and then, does the Firehouse have a mission statement or a purpose when you guys talk? What is your reason, what do you give the community and the world that nobody else gives?
Well, we do have a mission statement, yes. We are, when we talk about it, like I said, we really do talk about it as a gift from the city to the city, and that we are just facilitating the location of, you know, this building and the arts in the building, creating a center for arts that people feel like they can come together and experience art, they can see films, they can enjoy dancing, they can see visual arts that's sometimes challenging, and they can discuss that, they can come in and talk about it with their neighbor. To me, the Firehouse is just as much mine as it is yours, as it is, you know, the guy down the street, so that's what we talk about, and that's what our greater vision is for it.
And then, last question, what's the difference between the Firehouse Arts Center, and, there's several galleries on Main Street, and I always go in and look, and they've got local artists, and they're cool, and they sell their stuff, and what's the difference between those places and the Firehouse Arts Center? Meaning, they're in a private, you know, they have to pay for rent, and they're showcasing local artists, and they sell their work. Firehouse Arts Center, free rent from the city, sell their exhibits, what's the difference?
I think the difference is something I'm working very hard to do, is to make the Firehouse a true reflection of the community and the art that the community wants to see. Again, I'm just a facilitator between, you know, the city to the people of the city, and finding out what art people want to see, and, like I said, sort of challenging what the idea of art is. Is it film? Is it dance? Is it performance? Is it theater? Is it symphony? I mean, all these different things. We're an art center, not just a gallery, and that's one of the things that I think is, you know, the main thing that sets us apart from, you know, the other organizations, and, you know, and of course, we're all showing visual art, so, you know, there are definitely some similarities, of course.
And just my two cents, the, I would have, I was just sitting here, for some reason, I've been to the Firehouse Arts Center quite a bit this last year. I am not an artsy guy, yeah, and I'm not the, excuse me, honey, shall we go down to the Firehouse Arts Center and peruse this week's exhibit? You know, if the Wago exhibit is at the museum, I'm, duh! But I don't consider myself a real connoisseur of fine art. But nevertheless, I've been to a couple dinners this year and heard local artists come in and talk, was at the rummage sale, and bought myself a scooter, but anyway, it didn't have anything to do with art. But the, but the one thing, you know, whether or not we want to give money to the Firehouse Arts Center, I drag my 15-year-old girl along with me, and I drag her to the galleries on Main Street, and I drag her to the Firehouse Arts Center. And for whatever reason, when she goes to the Firehouse Arts Center, she comes out and wants to volunteer, and I see her drawing the next day, and, you know, doing artsy things, so I can't explain why, it's just that my observation has been that whatever it is they're doing, they seem to be making more of an impact, at least on the people that I see interacting there. And whether or not that's worth $8,000, I don't know, but that would be my anecdotal answer to the question that I asked you earlier. So good luck with what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Well, I'll tell you, the $8,000 is worth it if you just look at the children's arts activities that they have every other Saturday. Usually they have, you know, anywhere from five to 10 kids attending, and if you look at the arts supplies that they provide for free to those kids, over a year, it would cost more than $8,000 to purchase them. Now, I know some of the parents that bring their kids can't afford to pay for it, and sometimes they sign up as members, but a lot of the kids that attend can't afford to take art classes on their own, so this is a great opportunity for them to experience it, and like I said, get their creative juices running.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lovison.
I think the, a point that has not been brought up with the support for the Firehouse is that here's a city asset, and without some funding to run programming, the building would sit underutilized. And so to keep activity in the building, which, you know, helps cut down on possible vandalism, graffiti, that sort of thing, and also, we want to, you know, we want to keep a building the city owns as an asset utilized to the fullest extent we can, and not just have, sit empty and only be open an hour a day. So I think the funding for programming goes hand in hand in utilization of the asset we have as the city, and I think that Councilmen Samori's point around the cost of art supplies these days, just like the Discovery Day program for the younger set at the museum, it costs a tremendous amount to do a little arts and crafts project where you have to buy a whole packet of something, and you use three items of it. But we have this great program at the museum where, you know, we fund that through general fund dollars and also contributions for people attending to support materials and staff there, so, you know, I see it pretty much as maybe an older version of some of the basics we do at our museum as well.
Well, I'll chime in. I guess some of the skepticism that you heard a little earlier is that the Firehouse has been in a little bit of turmoil. Executive directors, board members resigning, a request at the end of the year for $8,000 for survival. Sandy, did we receive a letter from the Firehouse regarding funding requests? Because I don't, it's not in our packet.
Mayor Protem, members of council, yes, we did receive one. I apologize if it was not in the packet, I'll go back and take a look.
Was there a breakdown, did they send in a breakdown of expenses?
I don't believe so.
No, there, I don't have a breakdown, just kind of a general idea.
No, there, I don't have a breakdown, just kind of a general idea of what we were using the money for, yeah.
Okay.
I can send it to you.
I, you know, I would like to see what eight thousand dollars is going to, is, you know, what we're donating. The other people that are asking for funding has asked us in great detail about where, where their requests are going to. Members of council have asked, whether it's a contract with the city, have asked us, have asked for, well, show us what your budget's going to be, where is this money going to? I'm hesitant, as one of seven, one of six tonight, to make any funding requests of any sort until I see exactly what the breakout's going to be. You know, we're not making any decisions tonight, but, so, in the last several years, the track record for the Firehouse has not been very good. And you didn't get funded last year at the end of the year. And I'm, I'm very hesitant to, that eight thousand dollars can go to one of these other organizations or can get rolled back into the general fund. And once I see some stability in the Firehouse, I have not seen that yet.
Sure, I understand.
I know a couple artists that are over there, I know Rick very well. But in what I hear and what I've heard, I've heard, I've heard the good and I've heard the bad. In trying to juggle that, from what you're telling me and what members of council have said, I'm having difficulty. So I would definitely love to see some sort of breakdown of a budget and then some sort of assurance about, we're going to use this money wise. I need that sense of assurance, so.
I was going to just speak to that. You know, like you said, there was a lot of turmoil for a while, so it's taking time to, you know, build it back. And, you know, to councilmember Levinson, you know, we want to utilize the building too. So we're excited to, you know, rebuild and get back to the stable stage and that's what we're doing and.
And that I understand, I mean, we have some buildings that, you know, that aren't being utilized. And I would really hate to see that one not be utilized. And I'm glad that, you know, you guys are in it, but I want to see some stability in there. So, Sandy, you have something?
That's Mayor Protem, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. So they did submit a letter, I apologize that it wasn't in the packet, I'll make sure that I find it and get it in the packet next time and I'll be able to get some break, some cost breakdown from Jessica as well. Just so that you know, once these folks are, if they are approved for the funding by the city council, that at that point, we enter into a contract of services with each of them. So they outline what it is that they're going to do for the money that you've granted them based on this conversation. And then at the end of the year, we ask for those stats and kind of just showing us what it is that we were able to gain with the funds that were created. So everyone here that has had funding before fills out both sides of that at the beginning and at the end of each contract here.
Right, and I don't want to make examples out of any of the organizations. You know, we have special, excuse me, special contracts with Longmont Area Economic Council and Visit Longmont where they provide quarterly reports to us, you know. But, you know, I hate to say it, but with the Firehouse, I need some sense of assurance.
Sure, yeah, I would be happy to provide that, yeah. And I would welcome you to come and visit us anytime.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. See, I do that enthusiastically with anybody who has the gavel.
All right.
I guess the, my question is, how long have you been the executive director there at the Firehouse?
Since January first.
Okay, so you've been there, okay, a chunk, a chunk, yeah, thank you. Nine months, ten days, Mr. Mathematician, thank you. And I guess the, I guess that was my question for you. And then, I remember having the same, same conversation when we did this last year, how the money was being spent. I don't know if we need to take a vote, but what I would like to see is, what would be really helpful right now is a one-page write-up that each one of these entities draft saying, not how we're planning on using the money, I want to see how the actual money was spent. I mean, it would be very, it would be a lot easier for me to say, you know what? I'm going to give Longmont Council for the Arts fifteen grand when I see this is how they spent that money. Or, yeah, I'll give Firehouse Art Center eight thousand dollars because this is how, right now, I'm seeing, this is how they spent that money. So that, that's what I'd like to see. It'd make things easier. And then also, in my business, we make our potential clients sign certain documents in big, highlighted, bold letters. I cannot promise you how much this will cost, sign here. Something that came to mind is, it might, it might be a good idea to have anybody we give money to, the executive director, just sign a statement saying, we recognize this is a one-time request and there is no guarantee or promise in the future years that this funding or any, any amount of it is going to be available to your organization. Just because I know that we say, well, they need to understand that some type of mechanism that really brings it home that we're not always going to have three hundred thousand dollars in one-time council requesting funds to give out. So, two thoughts, I don't know if I want to make a motion because we haven't really discussed it, et cetera. But I'd like to see the contract for services write-up on each one of these organizations in the future.
To Mayor Protem, councilmember Bagley, while I'm providing the additional information from the Old Fire, from the Old Firehouse Art Center, I'll also show you the contracts that we do have them sign, their one-year contract that they sign. This is, it starts at this time and ends at this time, here's the amount of money and here's the agreement for services. So I'd be happy to show you what those look like for the existing folks that do receive funding right now.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I guess I don't want to see the contract, I want to see that, I want to see a, when I see a one-page write-up, it means I don't want to read a lot. Is while I'm sitting here, it'd be nice to see two paragraphs on, here's how we spent the money you gave us last year. Not necessarily it was in the contract, I mean, you got better match. But it'd be nice just to know, well, what's that hundred and eighty thousand dollars going to specifically used for? Is it going to be to hire two part-time counselors and a full-time, you know, liaison? Is it going to be, you know, classes on why it's not nice to break tombstones? Is it going to be, you know, regional air quality boxes that are going to go into the city of Longmont? It would just be nice. Or is it going to be sitting around beating a drum, singing, you know, camp songs? It would just be nice to see.
Mayor Protem, councilmember Bagley, I will provide, there are one-page summaries at the end of the contract. I'll just provide the one-page summary that shows how they spent the money at the end, which is what we get, we get that from them at the end of the contract.
Perfect, I would love to see that.
And when we don't get that for is the rack because it's an intergovernmental agreement, it's different, it's not a contract.
Okay.
So that's what we don't get it for, but I'll.
That'd be very helpful.
Got it.
Thank you, Ms. Cedar.
Councilmember Lovison.
And I'm, I'm going to guess that if any of these organizations did not fulfill the obligations of the contract, that staff would have written that somewhere in the council communication, correct?
Mayor Protem, councilmember Lovison, that's correct. But it's kind of a high-level detail. So for example, in the Longmont Council for the Arts, what we'll see at the end of the year is that they spent the money and produced this many art enthusiasts magazines, or they produced this many different shows, those kinds of things. And so that's what we're looking at to make sure that the, so we don't necessarily do a dollar-for-dollar receipt checking, but we do make sure that what was stated to the council is what's generally shown at the end in statistics.
And, and to be honest with you, you know, we have a contract and it's a legal document and they've signed something saying it's, you know, one year, this is no obligation. I think that maybe councilmember Bagley doesn't understand, you know, fully how all this other paperwork happens behind the scenes anyway to protect the city. I mean, they do all that kind of protection stuff all the time. We just, you know, we never see what happens behind the curtain, so, yeah, it's okay.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Oftentimes, I struggle to understand the contract process. But I guess the, I guess really what I, yes, so I guess.
I need a tennis match.
Yes, so I guess really, again, to be clear, it's that process that I'm confused on. It's not, it's just, I just want to understand when we're talking about dollars, what the dollars were originally intended for.
We can provide that information and I think also the suggestion on including that information where there's no guarantees in the future, we need to make sure that's in the contract as well. Highlighted, bold, uppercase.
Okay. You didn't have to stand there for that whole thing, but thank you.
Thank you again for your time and for your support.
Okay, thank you.
Jim.
Final request for council one-time is from the St. Green Historical Society, Galen Miller, here's for that request.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Santos and councilmembers, my name is Galen Miller. I am a board member, an officer of the St. Green Historical Society and chairman of Old Mill Park. What we do with the historical society is historical preservation and education. And the education, I'm speaking primarily from Old Mill Park, I know no that better than any of them. The education part of it is through Pioneer Days where we invite third graders from the St. Green Valley School District and other schools in the, from Boulder and throughout the county to come to Old Mill Park for class and learn about the buildings we have there. The Appleton Cabin and Waxsmith Shop, the Billings Cabin and the Halt Millhouse. All these structures were built in, from eighteen sixty to eighteen ninety. They were moved to the Old Mill Park, stone by stone, log by log, and it was opened in nineteen seventy-six. The education part of it is run by docents, they go into character. And if Mrs. Appleton is sitting in a rocking chair, that is who she is. And they go through the whole canvas. Last year, we had thirteen hundred-plus third graders come through Old Mill Park in two weeks. We also go through the Longmont Museum and their Seekers and Searchers Program for two weeks during the month of July. It's more like a day camp. Hopefully, next year, we'll have a program with the DAR. We had one this year and it kind of fell through because it was too short of notice to be put together. But it is a violin recital utilizing our stage. The park is open to the public from the first part of April until November fourteenth, seven days a week, and from nine o'clock in the morning until sundown. I close it at November fifteenth and do some maintenance. And then, weather permitting, we will open it during the winter time. Thanks to the many volunteers, our costs have gone down. We have a Facebook group, I figure they put in three hundred hours by themselves. Myself, I put in a lot of hours down there. We utilize the Longmont and Boulder County Community Services about four to five times a year. And next month, we start a Boy Scout Eagle Project that's going to be run for probably two days, the way they got it set up. The Hoover Home and Hoover Farmstead are open all year round to the public for tours and programs by docents. And this is done at a minimal cost because it costs to run the Hoover Home. The Flag Day Program is done every year in the month of June and provided for the public at no cost. That is about all I have, I thank you for your support and hope we can still have your support.
Councilmember Lovison.
And the, thank you for your, your information. The request, though, is a maintenance, is for maintenance of the grounds of the three facilities that the historical society operates.
Yes, it is.
And there was some information in the recent past about, well, we've seen letters to Johnny St. Green on, in the newspaper around some maintenance issues with the landscaping at Old Mill Park. This money would help keep that park up, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Councilmember, uh, Benly, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos, that's quite a mouthful, actually. I, I just want to say thanks for all your good work and it's just awesome that you're teaching our children about our history and I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I, just, my thought is that fifteen hundred dollars, you guys are upkeeping parks maintenance, essentially. And you guys are servicing a crack load of preschool and kindergartners to learn of how, our local history. That just sounds good, so, good work and, and, yeah, great.
Thank you.
Well, I wouldn't use that term, but Galen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim. Is that it for the?
That's it for one time, did you?
Actually, we, I, we're going to take a very short, ten-minute break.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, let's come back. Uh, before we go back into the budget, um, the city attorney has advised us that we need to revote on the Longmont Housing Authority. The vote, original vote was three votes for Wendell Pickett, but apparently that's not a majority. Mike, we're just, he was just here. So according to Valerie, that is correct. There he is. So he's giving you the thumbs up that we need to revote on the Longmont Housing Authority. So Valerie, would you like to tell us what we need to do, please?
You need to vote between Wendell Pickett and Heath Carroll because they were the two top vote getters. Keith Cantrell only received one vote, so we'll take her off.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Councilmember Finley voted for Wendell Pickett. Councilmember Santos voted for Heath Carroll. Councilmember Witt voted for Wendell Pickett. Councilmember Samori voted for Heath Carroll. Councilmember Bagley voted for Heath Carroll. And Councilmember Levison voted for Wendell Pickett. So it's a three to three vote. Now it's even less.
Now we just vote again. We can vote again.
We can vote one more time.
Vote one more time.
Okay, Councilmember Bagley voted for Heath Carroll. Councilmember Witt voted for Wendell Pickett. Councilmember Finley voted for Wendell Pickett. Councilmember Levison voted for Wendell Pickett. Uh, Councilmember Samori voted for Heath Carroll. And Mayor Protem Santos voted for Wendell Pickett. So now Wendell Pickett has four votes and Heath Carroll had three. So Wendell Pickett does have a majority now. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Mayor Protem Santos, members of the council, we'll resume with the two thousand fourteen budget. And, uh, the next slide or item is dealing with ongoing expenses with one-year commitment. Um, there, again, there's two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars of such expenses identified for two thousand and fourteen, but it is not included within the proposed budget. Um, this slide is pretty hard to read. You got, um, page S fifty-eight of the council communication includes this same table that, um, Z is still pretty hard to read with the print on that, but page S fifty-eight. But what we're trying to do is show you what happened between, uh, two thousand and thirteen, when we had a hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars of these type of expenses. And now in two thousand and fourteen, where it's two hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and five. So there were a couple of, uh, sources that were being funded through this last year that are, are no longer being requested here. The first is the Poverty Initiative for eighty-five thousand, which will be funded with Human Service Agency funds. And the second amount was the materials for the mayor's book club of twelve thousand dollars. That amount's not requested in two thousand and fourteen. So there are seven other areas that, uh, are being requested, are identified for potential funding. Ongoing expenses with one-year commitment. We have some staff here that are going to address each one of them. And, uh, I'm gonna start by, um, having Kim Sugar come up and talk about wildlife management requests of seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Good evening, council. Um, the wildlife management funds, um, the last few years, it's been funded as one-time funds, even though it's ongoing for about seventeen thousand dollars. These funds are utilized to manage wildlife and prevent or minimize conflicts between humans and, um, the wildlife. Um, one of the biggest things that comes out of this funding is our contract for prairie dog management. There are several areas in the city where, um, we have removed prairie dogs. And so we actively continue removing them because they will come back to that area. So some of the areas are the shooting range, um, Dawson Park around McIntosh Trail. Um, we just removed prairie dogs at Quail Campus to prepare for development of that site. And then in addition, every year, we have, um, different unique circumstances that come up. Like right now, we are having issues with beavers. Um, we've had issues with pigeons at a variety of city facilities. And these are not at all, uh, these are not just at parks. These are also Civic Center and some of our other larger facilities as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be able to answer them.
Councilmember Witt.
Did I hear you correctly? There's a beaver at the Civic Center?
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry. Beavers around the rivers, ditches, sorry. Right. And a question that I asked a couple of weeks ago. It's true. Do mosquitoes count as wildlife? I never got a clear answer. Sorry.
Officially, they are not wildlife, but we do manage them within our wildlife program. But these funds typically do not go to mosquitoes.
Councilmember Levison.
So, um, Harold, is this one of the items that you would love to bring into the regular part of the budget?
Actually, all of these items, um, are...
Which ones would you love the most?
The problem that we actually had, or not a problem, the issue that we had to deal with this year is, um, addressing the four hundred and fifty-five thousand, really didn't allow us to deal with it, uh, this, um, run through the budget. And, and so that's why we included it in this category for, um, to consider whether or not we want to continue funding these. Um, or if we don't fund them, obviously, we're gonna end those programs.
Right.
So the goal is eventually to, to move or make decisions on whether or not we continue. But based on this year, we wanted to go before council to see, do you want to continue it for one year?
And I guess, um, when we're looking forward, if we have, the amount actually has gone up from one ninety-eight to two ninety-six, um, I would like to see, when, when Jim's talked to us about maybe revenue increasing or being above what projections are, I would first like to target these items. I don't know how you, you intend to, you know, click things off the list, but it would be, um, preferable to click off these items first as opposed to, you know, massaging another part of the budget. That's just what I'm seeing is being kind of transparent in the way you've been talking to us.
The, um, the process that we went through is obviously, let me back up a little bit. Obviously, as we go through the prioritization process, this will potentially go into the mix with everything else. We actually talked about these very early on in the budget process and how we were gonna deal with it. If you look at the last three, the addition, those were in the budget as pilot projects. And so we felt that it needed to really move into this category because those are ongoing expenses utilizing one-time funds. And some of those projects, um, we actually have to report back to council on. Um, I believe the, um, I can't see. The proactive code enforcement is one of those that it was, uh, it was a specific term in terms of a pilot project that we had to report back to you all to determine whether or not, um, the council wanted to continue with that. So there was a mandated return to council. Um, and, and so, you know, I will say that this will, as we move into the full prioritization process, this will compete with everything else that we have in play. Now, in terms of what we ticked off the list, if you remember early in Jim's presentation tonight, a lot of those were what we would consider must-pay bills. And, and so what we try to deal with is the must-pay bill or the must-pay aspects of our budget first, and then we move into these other things. And so when we, when we look at the options we had, we used the majority of those options in this process to deal with the four fifty-five.
Thanks. I, I just, that just seemed relevant to make that, um, comment as opposed to making it disconnected at the end.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I guess the, uh, I, I, first of all, the, uh, this supplement to my packet, I just now got it tonight. I didn't have a chance to read through it, so I realize that some of this might be in the packet. But my question is, so going back to what you just said, so these three things that are, so they're not in this year's budget, but they're coming in to the two thousand and fourteen budget?
Actually, they are in the two thousand and thirteen budget. This is just a, um, matter of classification. We're now saying, you know, they were pilot initiatives, and so we didn't consider them to be, uh, ongoing with a one-year commitment. But, you know, looking at them now, we're saying, you know, really, this is recurring year after year, and we do need to make decisions about those pilots. We probably should have always classified them as ongoing with a one-year commitment.
Okay, so my question is, going back to the budget reset, are we not trying to get rid of expenses with one-year commitments?
Yes, we are, but...
So get rid of or fund with ongoing funds?
Correct. So my question is, why are we putting in two hundred thousand dollars of expenses with one-year commitments back into the budget?
They, they haven't ever come out of the budget, and these are not in the budget in two thousand and fourteen until you direct us to include them. So again, this is just a matter of classification. In, in starting the budget reset process and looking at, looking at these things closer, we said, you know what, there's more of these type expenses than we were identifying before, and we should now call them the same, ongoing with a one-year commitment.
So it's just, so you're not saying that we're now adding them in, you're just saying, let's be honest about what they are?
Right, but they're not in the fourteen budget until you tell us to include them.
So where would we?
They're currently not in the two thousand and fourteen budget. We would be using fund balance to fund these.
Understood. So my question is, if we don't put them here, do they, do they just go away altogether?
Yes.
All right.
So they had, they, they were utilizing, the bottom three were utilizing one-time funds last year. They were just classified as pilot projects.
So is John Clark's Neighborhood Revitalization Program that twenty-five thousand?
Correct. That was utilizing one-time funds last year.
Okay, so when I was on coun, when the first week I was on council, I got a, I don't know if, Mr. Club, there he is. Uh, the first time I was here, uh, the first time I was on council, that first week, we took a, a tour and we saw some of the work that, that Neighborhood Revitalization Program was doing. That's cool stuff. You know, I mean, that's the kind of work, when I always say, we need to have a pretty town. You know, we're revitalizing areas without redeveloping, and it looks awesome. I think we should do that all over Longmont. So he was, where was that money coming from, if it wasn't that much?
We had classified those as one-time expenses at that point in time. Now we're saying, apparently, that was two years ago, right? So this is the third year of going into the fourth year. It's really an ongoing expense. So we're trying to classify it correctly here, moving forward into fourteen, as being part of those type of expenses that we should address in the budget reset.
And so if, so right now, is the choice we're being given this or defund it? Is it, is it binary? Is it that, remember when I said we're doing zeros and ones? It's, it's digital budgeting? So we've either gotta say we're keeping it or it's gone. You're forcing us to do that?
Well, if council...
I mean, I, I know it's, I know it's staff. You can't force us to do anything, but technically, that's the idea, right?
Well, if, if council decides to fund it this year with one-time funding, then what happens is, is as we go into the prioritization process that we have been talking to you about and we've been gearing up to go into, then it actually competes in that prioritization process with the rest of the organization. And so, absent significant increases in revenue, as we move through that prioritization process, there will be decisions like that that we have to make as we look at the overall general fund budget.
And if it competes in that process next year and doesn't, doesn't make it into the funded status with ongoing dollars, we'll be sitting here next year with the same type of discussion and decision-making.
And I guess, so I guess the only other question I have on this is, uh, the emergency housing for winter sheltering. Right now, I know that the Hours Center got rid of their warming shelter. What's the, what would that seventy thousand dollars be used for? I mean, are we opening up City Hall? Are we giving money to private churches?
So we have folks here to talk about those.
Each one of them.
Each one of those, and, and so that they can go over that.
But I want the answer now. Man, I'll wait.
So, I'll ask, if you did have any other questions for Kim, I'm gonna have Karen Roney come up and introduce the rest of these. They were all falling under the community services arena.
Uh, no, let me, let me ask a question real fast of Kim, of Kim. Sorry, Karen. The, um, going back, sorry. Wildlife management. And I'm sure you guys have scrubbed this very well to figure out if there's any other fund that this money can be used from.
Yes, we have reviewed what these funds are going towards. Um, we actually do have some other funding that we use from water fund, from open space to manage wildlife on those properties that are covered by... manage wildlife on those properties that are covered by those funds, so...
And this is the gap?
This is the gap that belongs to general fund, to the general fund properties and facilities.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Come on up here.
Great, thank you. My name is Karen Roney with Community Services. And the rest of these items do fall in the Community Services Department. And what I'd like to do, we have several staff members who will come up and answer all the specific questions, but what I'd like to do, since those are up there, is just to clarify how they're there, in addition to what is pretty obvious. So we'll talk about each of these in general. So the Bright Eyes support, that has been an initiative that we have tried and have requested over the past several years to have that into an ongoing operational status. And we just have, it has not risen to that, to that level of approval. So that is one, obviously, we're going to talk about tonight. We are going to talk about the multicultural plan, and that really has been funded, the implementation of those strategies, been funded on a one-time basis for the past 10 years. We are celebrating our 10th year of our multicultural efforts, and I will talk about that. The Mental Health Services Contract, this is something that has been implemented since about, oh, about five or six years ago, and Kathy Fedler will talk about that. And so it doesn't fall into one of those pilot initiatives, but it's something that is, we have added, and it's important for us to feel like, to continue to operate that if we can at all possible. And then those three other areas that we will talk about, the emergency housing for winter sheltering, is really a contract that we have with the Longmont Housing Authority, and Kathy will talk about that. You know, our hope would be that in, we were hoping that this might be the last year, we're hoping that 2014 might be the last year that we would fund that out of the general fund, and we would hope that we can move that to the Human Service Agency funding process. And, and that kind of depends on if we modify the eligibility criteria for agencies that can we see funding. Right now, it's, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. The Longmont Housing Authority is a governmental entity, and so we're going to be having those discussions actually on Thursday if we change our criteria. So it could be funding for that service that Kathy will talk about would come out of Human Service Agency funding. The proactive code enforcement was a three-year pilot, so John will come back, come up and talk about that. And we just really need direction from council, not necessarily tonight, but soon. If, if there's enough information that says, yeah, we would like to fund this one more year, and with our intent of being able to have this as an ongoing operational program. And the Neighborhood Revitalization Program is something that actually we have, we have operated for about 10 years. And again, John will talk about that. We are, we had planned to come back to City Council, because we are at the, kind of the end of that next cycle of neighborhoods that we were revitalizing. We are working on the last midtown neighborhood, and so we really are at that point to get direction from council about, do we continue to do Neighborhood Revitalization as we have in the past? Do we do something differently? Or do we not do that at all? And the $25,000 is a temporary staff person to help support those, those targeted revitalization efforts within the neighborhoods. And John will talk, talk about that. So that's, they're a little bit different, but that's kind of the brief history about how we got here with those. And the first person, we'll just take it one by one, that's in your packet on S-58. And so I will invite Christina Pacheco, our Children and Youth Resources Manager, to talk about the Early Education Coordinator.
Hi, Christina.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Potem Santos and members of council, and Christina Pacheco, Division Manager with Children and Youth Resources. Let's see if we can get to our slide. All right, I'll just go with it. I can do that. Okay, so the, the request that I am going to talk about is our Children and Youth Resources Community Coordinator. This position coordinates our community-based initiatives and city resources to address early education needs. And it, and this position really works in three different areas. It... So this position is responsible for oversight of three different areas. Our Bright Eyes Collaboration, which is a best practices model out of the National League of Cities, that brings together a collaboration at a community level to address early education needs. The second area that is under the oversight of this community coordinator is our Grade Level Reading Plan, which again is a community response to summer learning loss, truancy, and literacy. It's coordination at a community level, and we really serve as the intersection between public and private institutions with regards to early education. In terms of another kind of sub-area of that category, we will be working with and applying to the National League of Cities for technical assistance to really help us coordinate efforts, not only at the city level, but the county level, and potentially the state level, around all of the different resources that these different entities put forth. How can they be coordinated in a fashion that will best meet the use of our resources? The third area that this position coordinates is our Parent Education Contract from Boulder County. We were awarded a little over $93,000 to facilitate the Avenida de Puertas and nurturing parenting programs, both parent education that work with younger, younger, younger children around community-based literacy, and then just communication with how parents can, can learn to effectively communicate with their kids at different stages. This position has been funded on a one-time basis, basis since 2007. The request is for ongoing funding in 2014. We requested that. One-time funds are needed to continue this position, however, in 2014. We know that early childhood success is critical to the Longmont needs that were identified in our, in our 2013 Human Services Assessment. And research shows us that 85% of juveniles who interface with the juvenile court system are functionally illiterate, and reading at below a fifth grade level. And so, much like Councilman Bagley mentioned earlier, it's really money that we spend now is going to save us money in the future. So the last point that I have is that over 2013, this coordinator has leveraged 132,000 in additional funds to address needs and increase the opportunities for our youngest community members to acquire the necessary skills. Any questions?
Councilmember Witt.
How do we measure success with, with our efforts in this regard? It must be difficult to gauge how, how well we're doing. What, what indicators do you use?
There are a couple of different things that, that we look at in the different pieces of this program. One is through our Mayor's Book Club. We look at pre and post book ownership in households. So we know that, that if children have books in the home, that they're more likely to, to use them, to read them. So that's one way. Approximately 50%, 50 to 60% of our people that are enrolled in Mayor's Book Club are low-income, so we know that we're targeting the right population. Additionally, what we want to do is work with the National League of Cities for Technical Assistance to address that very, that very point. How can we align all of our systems and really look at those, those outcomes to making, to make sure that what we're doing is, is the right thing?
Because it would seem that, I'd want some data to show, just because there's...
So we have numbers of books in homes, as our data said. I hope that if we get that technical assistance, we would be able to show that the literacy rate actually did improve. And, and we feel that we would be able to get the information we needed to track that information. And what we know is that through our latest standardized TCAP scores, is that the third grade reading levels have improved. And so we all have heard about the great work that the St. Green Valley School District is doing. And if we look at it as, as a continuum and a whole array of services, I think we play a little, a little part in that as far as the response from a community level. We know we're headed in the right direction based on the outcomes that we're seeing, for example, with, with TCAP.
All right, thank you.
If I can jump into, one of the things that we're doing when they talk about the NLC grant is we're starting to use a lean process in, in the organization as a whole. And part of it is, is not only in this case, but as an organization, how do we, what are we doing? And then how do we measure what we're doing and the success of that? And so this is something that we're really trying to bring out across the organization. We've run a few groups through it. We've run about three or four groups through it. Obviously, the NLC component will allow them to do this, but it's something we want to get the entire organization into as we move forward.
Councilmember Levison.
I, I've always thought we should have moved Bright Eyes into a different category. I mean, having it, we know that this is, once you start this kind of work where the city is facilitating disparate efforts in the community to try to bind things together and avoid duplication, I always thought that we should have moved this Bright Eyes Coordinator position into some other part of the budget and not just hang it out there with one-time funding. I also know from doing some more work with National League of Cities, Youth Education and Family Council, that they're really coming up on the cusp of some great grant opportunities, besides the one you're talking about, maybe some other future grant opportunities. So I think that having the coordinator there at this critical point where they've already been raising some additional funds, and we have the opportunity to capitalize on some technical resources and some funding, is great. The one caution I have is that we don't add to the city's budget if it's not a core thing we would be doing already once the grants run out. And that's always been a mantra of mine, to make sure we're not expanding things where we normally wouldn't have made that choice to fund. So I'll support this, and I'm really, really pleased that Mayor's Book Club has taken off and had enough community support that we're not paying for the materials anymore. I know that there's been a great effort in the community to communicate what we're doing in that program. And having that community support, the private dollar support validates the fact that we first leveraged some taxpayer money, and then that's been taken over as a community project. I know there are a lot of volunteers who helped staff, stuff those backpacks, and all the volunteers I talked to are very happy to give their time and, and see value in the program. So I would really like to see items such as Bright Eyes Coordinator, all those early childhood staff member FTEs and other materials and programs looked at in that scope of what our Survey of the Human Service Budget indicators were. Because I think supporting that, supporting that work that the community and the agencies have already highlighted for us is great. And I, I look forward to getting more things going with this at-grade level reading plan.
And as I mentioned, we do have, we have leveraged funding to pay for Mayor's Book Club supplies. The other piece that I did want to make sure to mention, along with the, the NLC Technical Assistance Grant that we're applying for, is that it does require support from our mayor. So we have drafted some information and sent it to his office, and hopefully he can take a look at that tomorrow.
Well, my, my only caveat is that, you know, I think Mayor's Book Club is fantastic. I, the Bright Eyes Initiative is great. My only concern is, I don't want to start treading on the territory of the school board, of the school district. And I'm, whether it's, adult education's been brought up by council before, that we should take it over. Early education, I mean, we're getting, I don't want to get in the education business. That is not the purview of city, of the city government. How close does this coordinator work with the school district?
Closely in terms of sharing information, but this coordinator also works with a whole wide range of other early education providers. We have preschools that aren't school district preschools. We have Head Start. We have other initiatives, Bright Beginnings. We work with a parenting place. So by no means is it duplicating or treading on the, on the school district's, you know, charge for, for what we expect school districts to do. But really, it is that coordinator that looks at the wide range of services that are provided and really tries to put them into a continuum to best use those resources. So if anything, it's about looking at the situation and using the resources that we have in the, in the best way possible.
Right, and that I get, but is it, are, is it within the scope of the city to take on early, early education?
Well, I think in terms of the prevention piece of things and what we know about literacy skills in, in youth, I think that that falls under what we do in Children and Youth Resources. It's about prevention, and it's about, you know, whether it's working on literacy skills or working with organizations that, that provide those literacy skills, that support, you know, that's similar to the work that we do with, with gangs and prevention and intervention at that level.
Yeah, and that, that I would agree. I, I have no sort of problem, I have no problem supporting organizations that do that. I have, my concern is, is that I don't want to start taking, being the facilitator. And, and it seems that we, we've gone down this path.
So Mayor Potem, if, if I could, you know, add to, I think what Christina was talking about, is that the, the work, the whole Bright Eyes Coalition is, they are strong, they are in charge of that grade level reading plan. And so the district is involved in that very strongly, as well as the entities that Christina talked about. And it's really making sure that each entity brings to the table what's appropriate for them to bring to the table.
So if they're bringing things to the table, are they, besides being, helping with the materials for the book club, are they bringing additional fundings to help us with the, the temporary coordinator?
Mayor Potem, no, they are not. And, but that doesn't mean that they're not bringing other resources to the table. I think we've been talking about the, the book club, that's one specific area, but it's, it's much larger, as Christina has talked about, in terms of what that coordinator does. And so...
And I understand that, but we are, but we are providing the, the wages? I'm, I'm sure this is benefited position?
No.
But still, but we are, but we are providing wages. And, you know, but we, again, this has been going, this has been going on for a while, and we're getting into a realm of education. And I guess that gets back to the, to the question of what is, what is the responsibility or what is the function of city government?
And, and I think we're talking about education, but it gets back to what we talked about a couple of weeks ago when we presented the Human Services Assessment. It's really talking about...
And with that Human Services Assessment, there were some things in there that I would argue is not the purview of city government.
And, and I believe that what we're trying to do is stay within the, the purview of city government. And ultimately, obviously, City Council is the one that makes those, that makes those decisions. But I think by having strong collaboration, the other collaborating partners are bringing their staff to the table, they are bringing resources to the table. And so we're doing, we're working really hard to try to stay within what is an appropriate role of, of city government in terms of our library sources, other kinds of, of things that Children and Youth Resources does. But ultimately, you know, council will, will give us the guidance about whether we continue to, to fund that, that coordinator to help to collaborate a lot of these things.
I appreciate that perspective. Councilmember Bagley? Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Santos. I guess the, I guess at the very first council retreat we had, one thing kind of stuck in my mind, and that was when we were talking about where the biggest difference can be made in development of our community. One of the experts had said that for every dollar you put into your pre-K programs, basically it has a bigger impact later on down the road. And so I've already, what I heard when we saw the school district having problems this past, these past couple of years with their budget, I heard Don Haddad and other executives on the school board basically say, when we're going to cut, we're going to cut pre-K and we're going to cut adult education. That's what I saw them do. And so those are the first to go. And I think that, I agree with Mayor Potem Santos, that we shouldn't be necessarily in the business of education. But I don't think that we're not in the business of partnering with the school district, picking up the slack and making sure that our community is strong. And so I think that, I mean, Bright Eyes, and as I read through the packet, where basically it talks about how this early education coordinator would be working with the children to create programs that build skills of parents, as children's first teachers, provide resources for family need, and increase the capacity of our community's providers, I don't see what they do is educating. I kind of see what they're doing as building a system to help those kids who really need it. And so I, on one hand, I agree with Mayor Potem, but at the same time, I think that they're serving a community need that I don't think other people really are. And if they're not funded, I would question, well, who's going to do it then? So that's kind of how I look at it. And then I've had the opportunity to participate in Mayor's Book Club, and those kids eat you alive. And so I would be, while I also encourage, you know, book clubs and the love of reading and all that stuff, rather than folk, I mean, when I think of the Mayor's Book Club, I think of television recordings. Whereas what I like about Bright Eyes and the reading programs here is trying to build a skill set where parents, teachers, and kids are discovering the love of reading, which will, you know, carry into the future. So the, I guess my question is, in addition to the Bright Eyes Coordinator participating in the Mayor's Book Club, if I said, no more Mayor's Book Club, what would their day consist of?
Well, Mayor Potem and Councilmember Bagley, that is, as I outlined in the first slide, one of the three pieces of what this coordinator does. The other two would be coordination of the grade level reading plan, and that is really about what you talked about, getting those resources together, you know, providing that continuum, looking at, from a community perspective, how we can address summer learning loss, truancy, and literacy. And then the third piece of that is that parent education contract, where we will be facilitating for the next 15 months these two different programs. So it's about parents as their first teachers and really working with the community to provide those services from the different agencies that I mentioned. So we'll have referrals from Department of Health and Human Services. It's really meant to kind of steer people away from the child welfare system. So how can we give those skills, help parents with those skills early on so that they're not involved in later systems, which we know costs all of us money as taxpayers?
Thank you. Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you. One of the other resources working through National League of Cities that we're going to have an opportunity to look at some of these performance measurements, upcoming in November, there's a summit on your, a national summit on families and youth, two days before the main part of the NLC conference starts in Seattle. And they're actually focusing a lot in that YEF Institute Conference on performance measurement, knowing whether or not you're being affected with the money you're spending in the programming. So I will be participating in that, that pre-session, if you will. The other thing I want to point out is that there is a hallmark kind of number that now comes up in evaluating standards for communities, and it is this, how many children are reading at grade level by grade three. So when we talk about, it's not really, we're not really doing education with this position, it's coordination and facilitation, but also having somebody sitting at the table and listening to the school district and figuring out where there are resources in the community that could be complementary. I also am aware that with the sequester, the number of slots for Head Start in our community will be diminished. And so those families that get turned away or cannot enter their children in Head Start need to have someplace to go for resources, whether it be finding another childcare provider that might be trained with the help of the Bright Eyes Coordinator in doing more than just pure babysitting when they're doing childcare, that they do some educational component, reading during the day, educational games, that sort of thing. I really don't believe this is mission creep because from the focus group that I went to, and Councilmember Samori was also there, around this grade level reading plan initiative, it really is a hallmark of your community, a number that companies look at as where your kids are, how good the community is to support education and achievement. And that's what businesses look for. They want to come to a community that, you know, every kid is reading at grade level because that's the number one predictor of success in middle school. And if kids are not successful and reading, have their literacy up to snuff at middle school, the dropout rate in high school becomes really dismal. And so to have some preventive strategies out there where we have a warm body that's able to help connect things in the community and connect, not having the city do the work. Actually, I think she may prevent the city from getting into doing work we don't really want to do. So I think that you can put the label of education on anything. I mean, education of a child starts the minute you open up a book or talk to them or, you know, do anything. So it could be done at home, it could be done in a preschool, it could be done in a home care provider situation as well. But I think having a network and a person who's a point person and developing those relationships in the community, interrupting the funding to interrupt the relationship building, I think, would be disastrous at this point.
Well, Councilmember Lovison, I didn't say that I was, I'd mentioned cutting funding, but what I had said was, and Councilmember Samori will get right to you, was that my concern is, and the things that you brought up was exactly education and the creep into the school district. You talked about businesses talking about education. That is a school board function. We should be talking with the school board and partnering with the school district. We should not be in the business, my opinion, of education. You know, and we can play tennis all night long and go back and forth, but I'm not going to do that. And again, I'm not advocating for the cut of the Bright Eyes Coordinator. I'm just having a policy discussion about education and whether or not, when budgets get bad, you know, again, is this the function of city government? The, it's come up time to time again. If we didn't have the fund balance for this, Jim, we probably would not be able to fund this at all. Am I correct? Probably not.
Well, I mean, obviously, it would be a different discussion because if we assume that we had no one-time funds available for this, the discussion would be, what are we adjusting in the operating budget, what are we making cuts to fund this position?
So, I see Mayor Coombs is here. So let's get through this piece of this discussion, and then we'll take a few-minute break, and then we'll switch chairs. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I know about a year and a half or two ago, the YMCA had a committee that was looking at the early childhood education, and they had people from Wild Plum, the community college, the school district, et cetera. And they were struggling with how to get the kids that are staying home with their grandparents so that the grandparents or uncles or aunts would read to them as opposed to just blocking them in front of the TV. And I don't remember exactly what the end result was or what the report was, but could that be a function that they could take over?
Mayor Potem Santos and Councilmember Samori, yes, that actually is another piece to what the coordinator is charged with. It's with that whole friend, family, neighbor portion of our community where kids are in care. That's really the piece where we play the intersection or kind of that facilitator between the public institutions, the preschools that we have, the friend, family, neighbor, and really looking at that at that wide scale. That's what we are looking at in terms of training and further community work. We've had, I believe, three early education summits thus far where we have invited caregivers that are in friend, family, that provide friend, family, neighbor care, and that is a segment of the community that we focus on.
Councilmember Lovison.
So I just want to be a little more precise. My discussion around the grade level reading plan doesn't really have much to do with education per se, but these target standards now that have become a way that communities are measured one against another.
Duly noted.
I have no further comments.
Thanks. Let's take a three-minute break so we can get Mayor Coombs in here.
Basically researched and presented to the Boulder County community. The City of Longmont and the City Council took a leadership role in saying, okay, let's do something about this plan and move it from a piece of paper to something that we do in our community. And that has resulted in the Multicultural Action Committee for probably the first eight years. The committee was basically in charge of, and it's a multidisciplinary committee, it's primarily community-driven. And what they have been doing is implementing various strategies within that plan that focused on capacity building as far as culturally competent services, strengthening the relationships between people from different cultures in our community. Some of you might remember the Tamalas and Talks that we did many years ago. Continuing to promote civic engagement and leadership, that was an area identified in the plan back 10 years ago, that we wanted to make sure that we had people in our community being able to have a greater voice in decision-making on policies that, sorry, that's all right, I'm just going. And then we continue to support a variety of cultural learning and understanding through celebrations, through seminars, all of those kinds of things. So really, for the past many years, 10 years, the City Council has been funding the implementation of this plan on an ongoing basis. For most of that time, that amount has been about $35,000. In 2013, we reduced that to $25,000. We revised the strategic plan, the Multicultural Action Plan. In 2012 and in 2013, through 2015, we really are trying to focus more on, really on that leadership development, continuing to have a deeper community education about multiculturalism. So we call it beyond the party. So we really hold a good party, and how do we continue that once you go to a variety of these multicultural celebrations, how do you continue your learning and understanding beyond that? And then really continuing, again, with community education and strengthening some of the partnerships with Sister Cities Association that you talked about, some of the other entities that maybe haven't been as involved in our multicultural plan as possible. So this year, the request was for $25,000 again to continue to support the activities of the multicultural plan. And about 50% of those funds go to support some of the annual events in terms of Dia de los Muertos, some of the Rhythm on the River special events, Single Day Mile, and several other festivals in the community, plus additional community education and leadership support.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've had this program going on for 10 years. Again, data, can we, so we give money for different events. Those events could probably get money from other sources in the city, so we don't actually have to, it doesn't actually have to come through the Multicultural Action Plan. Looking at the list, if there's something that I would have to cross out, I think that we, I think we need to integrate the spirit of the Multicultural Action Plan in all areas of the city and not necessarily have this called out in one specific section. I think it needs to permeate the organization as a whole. But again, if we had some feedback or something that we could track on how we're doing, that would be, other than how much money we've spent. Do we have any data on, okay, this is how many board and commission members from a different cultural background 10 years ago, and here it is now? And is there a direct correlation? Anything like that?
Mayor and Councilmember Whit, it would be great if we had some data. This is a collaborative effort, and, you know, we really, most of it, most of the funding is for events. We certainly have information on participation, and as we look at this next iteration of the plan, we do want to do more outcome-based work. It's really difficult with the kind of activities that we support, you know, right now. We can certainly talk about some of the data as far as the people who were involved in the Tamalas and Talks, and did they move forward and get involved in boards and commissions? We haven't been very successful in that, and it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing opportunity.
We haven't been very successful in that and it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing opportunity. But we, we do not have, I can't stand here and say I have firm data to say exactly what the impact has, has been other than anecdotal data, which isn't the answer to your question.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you.
One of the significant things this committee has done, and I'm liaison to the committee, is that they have provided some seed money where there's not been another part of the budget. There is some money for events where people could apply for a small pot of money. But for example, the Asian Chinese New Year celebration was started with a little bit of seed money from the Multicultural Action Plan. And there is not really any other place in the budget to get seed money to do a cultural event. And that event has grown and grown and grown and really given pride and a sense of belonging to the community from the Asian community when they have a signature event that draws hundreds of people to Silver Creek High School. Plus, the money that, that my understanding is that the proportion of money for events is compared to the, to true cost of the event is not even 25 or, or, I mean, certainly none of the events that are given money or the funding that comes from this plan or committee is even remotely close to half or 50%. So I, I, I don't know if you can give us a feeling on kind of the proportion of what's funded and...
Council, Mayor and Council, I, I think, you know what Councilmember Levison said is, is, is correct. Obviously, these dollars really help to leverage other, other dollars through the other county governments, you know, as well as through the, the private sector. So it, it, it is all about leveraging with resources, people, time to, to really bring about, you know, some of these events and some of these activities. They really continue to promote You Belong in Longmont as a caring inclusive community.
Well, and I think that, do we, do we ever ask when we do the community survey, the feedback survey, if someone is of a different ethnicity besides, you know, Latino, Caucasian, if they, if they're, you know, if they're from Southeast Asia or the Indian subcontinent, to find out if we do track, do those people, we do have questions about how do you feel in your community and do you get a sense of community? I think that if we can figure out if we get any of these subgroups hit, that would be great data. But because we don't select who those surveys go to and certainly they self-select about responding, you know, we'd sort of a scatter shot.
And, and the only other thing I would add to that is that soon, John Clark will be bringing back the results of the Sense of Community Survey. So that is a new tool that we administered this year. And I think Councilmember Levison, that, that tool can give us the opportunity that we haven't had before to, to really track some of that information.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Easier to say than Mayor Pro Tem Santos or syllables there. But I guess the, the, I guess the, I'm coming at this from a unique point of view, I think, in that if you haven't noticed, I'm a white boy. And I, I am Councilmember Witt Levison. I'm a white boy. And the, but I'm married to a, a woman who at one point was a Mexican national. We've got a 15-year-old Latina and we adopted three Mexican kids. We're a multicultural action plan example. And we are, yes, you are. Yes, you are. And so I guess the, I, I think the fatal flaw here is, I, I think that as I'm looking at this funding request, if someone were to come up and say, here's $25,000, go out and do something, spend this money to have a better multicultural experience or view on the world, it's not going to happen. You come up with a multicultural action plan by integrating that into whatever it is you're doing. And so I would much rather see, you know, everybody to city, city level, you know, anybody who has a department, et cetera, kind of have ingrained in their department what a multicultural action plan would look like, rather than a $25,000, here, brainstorm and come up with ways to have activities that are multicultural. Because at the end of the day, activities don't really, I don't think multicultural activities really get to what you want. What you want is to integrate and understand and interact. And so on one hand, when I say, yeah, I could really understand why we'd want to cut this one, but it's not from a racist perspective. On the contrary, it's, you've got to, it forces, you've got to come up with other, other ways to become more multicultural and integrated. So that's just my two cents. So if anybody else is having that thought, I'm having that thought.
I think the only thing that I would add to that is the, the Multicultural Action Committee would also have that thought. So, you know, so they are, so what is most visible are, are the activities. And, and the committee actually, they understand and they know it really is about ways to build relationships. So they look at maybe an activity as a way to bring people together to build a greater or longer-lasting relationship. So, because the party isn't going to get it. And, and they, they understand that very clearly. And throughout the course of the last 10 years, have been working on different strategies to bring people together, to form greater understanding and lasting, and lasting relationships. And we can certainly bring more the data that we have in terms of what has happened and what we've been doing. But you're, and you're absolutely correct.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, I want to give anybody else an opportunity to jump in because I've spoken.
I guess I'll, I'll jump in real quickly. You know, I, I really enjoy going to like the Peruvian festival. The Indians had a, an event at the Longmont High School. I mean, you just learn a lot about the culture, the different foods, the dress, the dance. I mean, something, I really enjoy the events. And I do think, you know, to me, it, I mean, obviously it'd be a lot easier for me to understand if my family was like Brian Bagley's family. But I think it does help bridge some cultural gaps, you know? I mean, I enjoy it. I enjoy learning about different people's culture and their events and their values. And I, I think there's value to that. So that's my two cents.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we might be confusing a culture within the city, an internal culture, of, you know, making multiculturalism a part of the city's DNA through departments as opposed to, this is really community members coming together with a little bit of city money and gauging and binding together disparate groups in the city and reaching out and spending a lot of time welcoming, welcoming people in. And I think that the committee has thought to go beyond just having the celebrations to try to find a deeper way of connecting people. I'll point out that there are other cities, you know, probably larger than our population that have dedicated offices that all they do is work on the diverse populations and making sure that everyone, even if you're in a niche population, is, is well-served and connected to the city and to the greater community. So, you know, I, I see that this is probably a less expensive option than other choices other cities may have made with a lot more staff time and structure. This, this budget doesn't go for really any staff time except for Karen being at the meetings and taking notes. Right? And...
Doesn't come out of this pot, but yes, we have two staff pepper, people pepper, whatever. Sorry. Two staff members that help to support the work of the Multicultural Action Committee.
But we haven't hired like a staff member a quarter time or anything. So the $25,000 is going to community-directed initiatives. And, you know, it would be nice if, I know we invested quite a bit of money through the Multicultural Action Plan into the Pearl Program. And we may not have seen a lot of board and commissioners coming out of the Pearl Program onto city boards and commissions, but the money we invested did yield board members on the nonprofit boards that would therefore look more representative of our community as a whole. So I think that, you know, the work there and the money we invested was really not lost. And who we decide to appoint to boards and commissions is us. So if we would want to, you know, choose, you know, those candidates that have come through Pearl, we did have a choice to do that.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As I sit here listening to this, as a city, we can provide seed money for events to get them rolling. But is it our responsibility to keep them rolling long-term or should they find their own sustainable ways? So am I hearing that if we don't, and this is, if we don't spend the $25,000, is the Peruvian festival going to go away? Is the Chinese cultural event going to go away? Is the Indian event going to go away? I don't think so because once they've established that tradition, they will find ways to keep it going on their own. Right? And I'm not just thinking on this particular program. I'm just looking at all the ones that we're funding one time that we've been doing for 10 years. At what point did it become self-sustaining? Or do we stop saying we're going to fund them one year at a time and just roll them into the budget as a recurring every-year event?
Okay, I don't see any further comments.
We have some more. So, some more. We have some more. All right. So the next item is the mental health services contract. And I will invite Kathy Fettler to talk about that service.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fettler, CDDG Coordinator. The mental health services contract is something that we began funding in 2007 with one-time funding because it became very apparent as we were starting to provide housing for homeless people, moving them into permanent housing, as well as the work on the substandard housing team and more recently, the RICE program, that there was a definite gap and need for mental health services for these folks to help them maintain their housing and to continue to, the work to be successful in their lives. The mental health partners, it's, it's a gap that they're not providing. Often, these folks don't have insurance, so they don't have that option either. So the city, on an experimental basis, and then again, it has continued on, contracted with a private mental health provider to provide crisis intervention, referral, case management, and/or short-term counseling, again, for Housing First participants, which are formerly homeless persons in permanent housing, residents who need assistance in addressing substandard housing conditions such as hoarding, and as I mentioned before, more recently, RICE participants. Many of the homeless who obtain housing find it difficult to maintain it because of mental health issues, behavioral issues, or trauma issues from their past. And being able to go to a counselor for short-term intervention has allowed them to address their issues and stay housed. Residents that are dealing with code compliance issues due to their hoarding are at risk of losing their home. And this contract allows them to access counseling to help them become code compliant. As you may or may not know, hoarding is considered to be a form of obsessive-compulsive disorder. And change cannot happen without counseling and/or therapeutic assistance. So without this counseling option, many of our residents would not be able to become code compliant and would lose their housing. And then finally, the RICE participants are often dealing with post-traumatic issues. We found out that over 80% of them or their children have been abused and need access to short-term counseling so they can continue to concentrate on the other aspects of their lives that they need to address. With a portfolio of about 95 to 100 units of permanent supportive housing under the Housing First program and an increase in the number of substandard housing complaints issued, a 56% increase over the past two years, staff anticipates a continuing need for the services. About 15 to 20 clients are able to access services each year, which equates to about an average of $1,000 to $1,300 per client as part of this contract and allows them to access about an average of 15 hours of therapist or counselor services. Finally, some of the problems that have been present, that they are encountering include anxiety, family conflicts, hoarding, legal problems, lack of problem-solving skills, psychosis, and PTSD. The other unique thing about this is it is short-term. And so referrals are made out as soon as the therapist have the client stabilized. And referrals are made out often to adult protective services, to other private psychiatrists or their primary healthcare physicians, mental health partners, if they can work that out, and some other community resources. About 62% of the clients seen in the past 12 months have had successful outcomes and have stayed housed. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. We need this must-keep. This is in the must-keep pile. That is all.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I agree with Councilmember Witt, the whole must-keep pile. But, quick question, and that is, what impact does this have compared, I mean, I, I was in the unique position to sit on the board during the interviews, and I was floored at how much money the county and the cities we all give to the mental health services organizations here locally. So my question is, does, do these services currently get provided by those organizations? And if not, what are we giving that they don't? Because if it's possible to give half this amount, just like, I mean, the amount, instead of giving $20,000 and we just give $10,000, is there a leveraging effect by giving it to an organization that already has an infrastructure in place to leverage that funding? So could we both save money and have a bigger impact by giving it to somebody who would do a better job?
So, Mayor, your sign still says Mayor Pro Tem Santos. Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley. So when we initially did this contract, and then again, after five years, which is our normal turnover process, we did another RFP. And we did receive applications from mental health partners, Salud Clinic, and some other private sector service providers. And this particular firm that we've been dealing with is the one that was chosen because of the level of service, their ability to immediately provide service. There is no waiting list. They get the folks in quickly. That it's a short-term process with a handoff to appropriate resources. So there was a number of different reasons why this particular firm was chosen. So we did look at, and the other firms that you, you might think about or organizations you might think about, did have an opportunity to bid on the, on it and were not successful.
So your response in a very polite way was, it isn't, it, it's, it's an additional service that these other organizations don't provide, that our, our community needs and that we're not providing, but we're actually outsourcing to an organization like this. And without it, our community and specifically those with mental health issues would suffer.
If I can jump in, I think the best analogy is it's a triage. What they're doing is actually triaging individuals based on an emergency need and then sending to these organizations based on that. If you didn't have the triage, it would be, some of those folks may not have access to these other facilities.
Okay.
So it's, you know, to use an army analogy, it's a MASH unit.
Okay. So my question, so my, so agreeing wholeheartedly with Councilmember Witt and her comment, so why is, again, why wouldn't this be removed from this list of expenses with one-year commitments and put into our normal budget? The housing and human services, for example, or this seems like an important one, triaging our mentally ill. So why, why do we have, you know, I could probably point to the budget and just pick out a page and say, why do we have, you know, certain things in the general fund and not this included? this included?
So again, I think taking back, going back to the beginning, that's what we're trying to do, and that's where we're heading. And specifically, when we look at this, the reason these have been in this category is because, and I'm going to talk broadly now about the entire group, some were funded with ongoing funds and then were shifted to one-time funds. Some have always been one-time funds. And so we have kept that category because then the decision-making process changes a little bit, and then we're making a decision of do we do X or do we do Y? And we think we really need the data to move into that conversation, and that's what the prioritization process that we're moving into is really going to give us is data to have that conversation. And then it also kind of boils down to some of the policy discussions that councils have tonight regarding, should we be doing this or should we be doing this? I mean, that is a big part of this, this overall conversation.
And then, last question. What if council comes back and says, oh, it all looks good?
So then what we're saying to council at that point is that's what happens in this year's budget. As we get into the prioritization process, then it's going to go into the hopper with everything else and then compete with the rest of the services that we provide as an organization. And we're going to have a ranking of those services across the board, and then that gets into the discussion that, that you just talked about.
So are you really looking, I mean, I know tonight Jim said you're not looking for direction, but I guess what is our role here as we continue to listen? Are we, I mean, are we to give you some type of insider guidance if we don't want something or don't like something? Or is this just you guys saying, this is kind of what's left over? This is the remainder of our math equation, and we're going to shove it back in somehow unless you guys tell us not to?
Well, no, actually, what we're saying tonight is, what do you want us to do from a policy perspective? Do you want us to put it in? And do you want us to put it in in terms of one-time funding this year? If you want us to put it in in terms of ongoing funding, we're going to have to have a different set of conversations. And then if council chooses to put that in in one-time funding, what we're saying is next year it goes and it really needs to go into the full reset process and into the hopper and compete against everything else. So I don't know if I answered your question.
You did. Good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
So just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. This is above and beyond what we already have as far as what we want community work to be done in the mental health area that normally goes through the Human Service Advisory Board process? Because this is specifically targeted for a certain category of people in the Housing First program or emergency housing, they're coming in with immediate problems.
Do you want me to answer that? So I think, Councilmember Levinson and Mayor, I mean, I think Harold did a great job in, it's a MASH unit, I guess, but, you know, it really is, it's not a service that was available. So I think particularly as we were working with particularly substandard housing cases and people who have hoarding issues, you know, we had a public health issue to deal with in terms of the housing, and we knew that the individuals that were struggling were really not in a position to be able to get the kind of assistance that they need so that we could keep them in the homes and we could stabilize them. So this really was, this is a specialized service. It wasn't necessarily something that mental health partners provided, because they do in-home work, they do intensive work, and as Kathy mentioned, is that it's real about stabilizing them, getting them on a path so then we can refer to the mental health partners. Right now, our current contractor is a private for-profit provider, which they would not be eligible for Human Service Agency funding. So that's why this special contract, as we look at how is this working and, and how do we incorporate this service if it is indeed something that we do need on an ongoing basis as a community?
I think the answer is, is if you look at the Human Service funding, this is something that could be put in the process, but the rules say, if it's a private corporation, you can't do it. And so I think that's part of it. What I would say to council is, I haven't been with a group here in a location where you deal with these emergency hoarding needs or any of these issues they deal with, but I have been into those facilities in my previous locations. It's a different situation. And it's a situation where individuals are essentially, they have a home, but if you don't deal with the issue, then, then the problem actually changes from someone that has a home to dealing with a homeless situation in this. And at times, I have seen cases where homes have to be demolished if it goes too long because you just can't, you can't save them. And so I think what this is, it really is going back to that triage component where what you're trying to do is not get to the point to where you have to take such drastic action and provide that intervention, and then pass the individuals off to other organizations that we are funding through, Health and Human Service Funding, and other options to kind of make sure that we continue down a positive path.
So I imagine that, well, I'm guessing that part of the, the contract also would be the service providers were identified people that had some kind of health insurance or safety net insurance that would help pay for some of the mental health treatments moving forward in case mental health partners or someone else in referral do also make sure that these, that participants in these services get asked whether or not they're on Medicaid, if, or Medicare, if they're eligible for either one of those two federal programs, to make sure that we don't use the small resource of $20,000 where if they were connected with access to services that would be paid for, maybe they're not signed up for the right government program that they're eligible for, where that federal money would be coming into the community perhaps to backfill the cost here so that we could leverage. So I want to know, you know, are people being looked at for their, their access to other mental health services through, you know, public insurance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to point out, a lot of the referrals that come from this actually come from our firefighters responding to calls or come from code enforcement officers or utility billing. And in a lot of cases, our staff members are notifying us to say, you really need to look at this. Would you say that's probably a significant part of the referrals?
Of the substandard housing ones, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, the next one is the winter sheltering request of $70,000. Again, this has been funded as an one-time expense for a couple of years now, and again, was addressing a gap that we were seeing in the community. To answer Councilmember Bagley's question from before we, when we first started this whole discussion, this is not emergency sheltering. So this is not paying for the warming centers, it's not any type of emergency sheltering. It is temporary shelter. So what happens is the funding is being used to take the most vulnerable persons or families who are actually living on the street during the winter months, October to April, and putting them into temporary housing for three to six months. This allows them to get stabilized, find work, get their kids established in school, and work with case managers to find permanent housing resources and benefits if they're eligible for any. This program does address a need and two of the goals outlined in the Longmont and Boulder County Ten Year Plans to End Homelessness. And I want to point out that the HOPE, the R Centers, Safe Shelter, the police, Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, and the Longmont Housing Authority all get together and decide pick out the folks who are the most vulnerable, the ones that are being referred into this program. During the 2012 to 2013 year, 23 households, including one veteran, were or are still being assisted. 10 of the 23 folks had positive outcomes, and 10 are still in progress, and three had negative outcomes. So the folks, the 10 folks that had positive outcomes, all are now successfully working and maintaining permanent housing, and one of these was a family with children. With this funding, the program will continue to provide temporary housing options for up to 15 vulnerable homeless households, allowing them a chance to get off the street, become stable, blah, blah, like I said before. The city contracts with the Longmont Housing Authority to provide this housing, so they operate it similar to the Section 8 program, only it's much more short-term. And this is not, at this point in time, eligible under the Human Service Agency funding. As Karen had, had mentioned before, the Housing Authority is considered to be a governmental entity. And again, Thursday, we'll be having a discussion with the Housing Advisory Board about that to review this policy. The other thing I wanted to point out is the L-HOT team, Longmont Housing Opportunities team, is working to try and figure out how to fund a more robust Housing First program, which does take folks that are homeless and put them immediately into permanent housing situations. So if we can figure out how to do this, then this program probably wouldn't be needed because we'd be able to put them right into more permanent housing situations instead of, instead of the temporary housing situation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but Mayor, I would move that we extend the meeting past 11 o'clock to the, finish our, the rest of our agenda.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, it passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Bagley descending.
Thank you, Mayor. So would this be one of these instances where the city council could decide to have a set aside of the human service budget? That we just stick something in a category that says of the 1.6, whatever the number is, you know, 900 something, we could just say, we're going to suck out $60,000 or $70,000 a year to do a special program, just like we've done the caseworker for the RISE program and some other things we want to continue to fund that don't fit into the, the normal pro forma?
Mayor and Council, yes, we could and yes, we have. I think as, as Kathy and I have talked about, is that with the, the assessment that we did with the new tiered funding system, what we really want to do is to take that opportunity and look at, then how do we change who's eligible for funding based on all the other changes that we have made? So the system that we have in place now or the practice we have now might not support us providing that kind of focused funding for those, those two tiers. It really had to do with meeting the basic needs, which housing was part of that, as well as children, youth success. So we really want the opportunity to look at how we change the rest of our funding system to support the work that we have already outlined in terms of taking those investments and focusing those on the most important needs in the community, which council directed us to do.
Well, and I know that in the past, when we've had, part of this emergency funding has roots in, I remember in December, maybe it was '07 or '08, when we decided as a council to use our council contingency budget for emergency shelter needs, and we basically took the whole $60,000 remaining in late December and devoted it to that. Is this a continuation of, of that one-time action that we took, and then we've just really seen how much need there is and continued it?
That was, that was.
Was it '09?
Warming center, wasn't it?
I think, no, I think in, I think it was, who said? I heard '09.
Was it '09?
So I think Council Samori was just on council. So, so in answer to your question, yes. So I think we saw the, the kind of impact that having that investment with housing, some of these at-risk individuals and families, you know, made sense. We saw some progress with that. And I think as Kathy also mentioned, or I mentioned at the beginning, is that what we hope is that if we fund this again from one time in 2014, this really wouldn't be the last, this would be the last time that we would look for one-time funding in that. It really does need to roll into our ongoing services and try to figure out how we do that through the Human Service Agency. That only makes sense, and I think we're, we are absolutely positioned to do that going forward.
Well, my assumption is that you will add, even though there are these, a lot of these things that haven't been in that budget before, when you look at that, that one and two-tier system, to throw everything in, including things like bright eyes and coordinator and all this other stuff, it's, it's going to be, the budget, the budget needs will grow exponentially almost compared to what we've had eligible before. And so are we setting up an even more competitive atmosphere that is going to drive the executive directors of all of our nonprofits even crazier than we feared from them this year?
Mayor and Council, I don't know. So, I mean, I think what we, what we are trying to do is, is really continue to look at what are the level of services that this community can support, and how do we make sure that we're investing those resources in the most important or significant needs? So, so we certainly aren't trying to throw everything into that pot and set everything up for, for failure. And some things are not going to be eligible at all to be included in that Human Service Agency allocation. So we're just trying to continue to do the, the good and thoughtful work around, if these are some of the most important issues in our community, and if homelessness is one of those, then how do we realign those resources in the Human Service Agency designation to really make a difference and meet, and meet those needs? So we're not throwing everything. I know it sounds like it. I do understand it probably sounds like that, but that certainly isn't what our intention is.
I don't, to me, this is a very important and worthwhile, I mean, you have 10 good outcomes and three not-so-favorable outcomes, but, you know, to me, that's a pretty good batting average, and I think it's money well spent, and these could be life and death issues for some people, so I could support this. I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor, Mayor Coombs and Council, my name is John Clark, and I'm your Community and Neighborhood Resources Supervisor, and I'm the last presenter on this item tonight. I, so, three years ago, I was in front of you, and you asked me to look at a proactive approach to code enforcement. And in the three years, we've, we've done a lot of things. And I'd like to start with the, one of the first things we did is we reorganized some of the staff. And that reorganization, we focused somebody on the substandard housing issues. That, just that process and the substandard housing team that this mental health person helped support reduced compliance time by 50, by 48%, 48% compliance time for those now the cases. Over the last two year, two years, those substandard housing cases have increased 56%. So we're keeping up that, that shorter compliance time and, and also our caseload is higher. So we, with the funding that you gave us, we hired two full-time code enforcement people. So over the course of the last three years, that caseload has increased 88%. Proactive cases have increased almost 450%. When we started this four years ago, we were at 20% proactive, 80% complaint-based. Today, we're at 65% proactive and 35% complaint-based. So those are some, some numbers that I'm really proud of. Complaints have actually dropped 22% in the last, in the last three years. And so this request is, is really to maintain that level of service that we're providing. Our caseload has gone from about 3,000 to 5,000. What we're finding is that people don't have to call and complain because they have a higher confidence that we're going to find code violations. We're focusing on those violations that have the most impact on our neighborhoods. That's my instruction to code officers. And so this request is to keep that level of service that we provided in the last three years.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And this might be a question for Kathy. Can CDBG be used for this?
CDBG can be used for code enforcement as long as we work in low to moderate-income areas.
Has it been thought of to be used for this? Has it been thought of to be used for this?
And we did use it for neighborhood revitalization for a period of time. Part of the issue is the, you know, you can't go out of those areas, but there are other cities that use CDBG funds for code enforcement staff.
Can we, I mean, can part of this, $99,000, can, can that be, some of that money be allocated to CDBG? And I understand that there's no guarantee, if a budget ever is passed at the federal level, and Councilmember Levinson laughs, and CDBG survives, correct, is there, is there a possibility that some of that, some of this allocation can be diverted?
So I can jump in, and the answer to that question is yes.
We just don't know what the number is yet.
And I think it also depends on where the work is actually going to occur. As John said, it has to be used in low to moderate income numbers. And so what I would say is we could look at it, we would have to determine where the work is really being performed and determine what percentage of the positions that he's talking about really applies to that, to get that number. I have been part of that, doing that type of work and funding that with CDBG in the previous community that I worked in.
Right, and that's what made me think of it when you, we first had our conversations, when you first came on. So, thank you.
But I'll let Kathy jump in with more specifics.
Well, and I would just add that for 2014, we did already do applications, and you're actually going on the 24th to be getting the recommendation, funding recommendations from the advisory board. And we did set aside only $15,000 for neighborhood revitalization due to where the expenditures were to date. So either we would have to take funds from projects that are being recommended in order to do it in 2014, or reallocate existing neighborhood revitalization funds if it was to be funded in 2014.
Well, and I think what you get into is you get into the same discussion with just a different funding source in the sense of there are limited funding, funds there. And then it becomes a prioritization in that conversation as well.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Santos, we have funded code enforcement initiatives using CDBG funds for neighborhood revitalization in the past. That has been something that we've done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
And in the past, I've helped this city spend that money when I was neighborhood leader. So I know how it works. I think that one of our, one of the things that I am most pleased with is the fact that doing proactive code enforcement makes the whole city look better. I think that one of the goals of this pilot initiative is that people didn't drive around their neighborhood or live next door to something that they thought, "The city really doesn't care because there's so much obviously wrong in violation of code here. Why should I bother calling in and maybe, you know, bringing the wrath of my neighbor down who I may not, you know, think is a good neighbor and may not be keeping the property up?" And people feeling a bit fearful. But being proactive in code enforcement really says, no matter where you live or if you have a neighbor who cares, there's a certain minimum standard in our community that somebody driving by, a city employee, whether or not they'd be picking up, you know, being one of our solid waste operators or utility worker, would also be able to identify code violations. And I know a lot of that's kind of eyes and ears, not just code enforcement. So I think that this brings up the entire community without necessarily singling out a neighborhood. I also think that when people have confidence that the city is noticing these things, it's a positive that less community members are calling in because they see that things are being taken care of. And they're not, they don't feel that they have to be proactive on, on this level. So I think that what Councilmember Santos was asking about is something that might be a relevant piece of information. If you haven't mapped where the concentration of code violations are, it would be an interesting map to see where you've done the code violation proactive work and how it coordinates with those boundaries of the neighborhoods that have done the revitalization services. And I know you've got a whole different levels of doing things like just putting door hangers on to actually people, making revisits and contacting people by, you know, a formal letter or mail, I mean, a letter or in person. So I really applaud this work, and I, I think this is a really good use of money because there are a lot of neighborhoods that don't have HOA boards, that are going to come knocking on your door and maybe be a little draconian. But I think that we have to maintain a certain level in the city of what our properties look like. And I would consider, continue to support this, and I think that maybe we should decide that we're not, but maybe we should end the three pilot, three-year pilot this year and just try to incorporate this somehow into the budget. Because if we can move this over, and it's $100,000, then I think that it'll maybe help us get the leg up for next year. And when we're looking at the use of CDBG money, there's, there are going to be a lot of needs for the CDBG budget. I'm looking at the fact that we've made some really good progress using CDBG money to do job creation for people in that, you know, $10 to $20 per hour wage. And having jobs for people that need jobs at that wage level helps support people paying rent and buying things in stores and not being stressing our human service agencies. So if we're prioritizing things with CDBG budget money, which we, you know, it's really unknown how much we're going to have in the future if they ever pass a budget, as Councilmember Santos noted, I think we need to have less reliance to do this kind of work with CDBG money and look at where we get better bang for our buck, which is job creation and, you know, maybe keeping some housing in the mix. But job retraining, we can use CDBG money with, and job creation, I think are better and higher uses. So while I support the fact that we have that flexibility, I wouldn't want to, it's too volatile, and there's going to be too little money in the future to rely on that.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is good. We shouldn't stop doing it. You know, if we want to do things like help the mentally ill, feed the poor, do a lot of the things that we're talking about two weeks ago, as well as on this list in that gap, you have to have pride in your community, which means that people are going to want to live here, which means that we need to have nice places to live regardless of what income level and tier that the home falls in. I would be willing to cut what is seen as vital services before this. Because when I look at the neighborhoods that have been revitalized, if we could do that with all of Longmont, we'd have more money to put into all of these other things that we currently don't have money for. So to me, that's a line that, when I see this, I don't know what it is you're doing in these neighborhoods, but they're beautiful. And the neighborhoods that haven't done this, if anything, I want it sped up because they need to be beautiful too. Thank you.
And I'm going to make a few points on neighborhood revitalization because that's been funded under one time, $25,000 for the last nine years. And we have made major strides. We've done six neighborhood plans. Council has seen those plans. But it's really a concept of talking to neighbors and saying, "What are the issues in your neighborhood that you think are bringing down your neighborhood? What is it that you like in your neighborhood that you want to hold on to and preserve? What's important to you?" And honoring those things and creating a strategic plan to implement those. We spent about $600,000 in CDBG money over the last 10 years. We've leveraged in about additional $310,000, $315,000 in additional funds. But it really has made a difference in those neighborhoods. In those neighborhoods, we also focused the Code Enforcement Pace Program, where we go in, provide education about what code violations are, give people an opportunity to clean up their property in partnership with solid waste, and then go start the proactive code enforcement to really change the dynamics in that neighborhood. We have completed five years in the midtown area. And a good question might be, John, what are you going to do next? And I think it's to really look at the rest of Longmont and how we can approach revitalization in all neighborhoods. Compiling, you know, we've consolidated things that impact neighborhoods in the community and neighborhood resources. We've been effective in using and leveraging those resources collectively and collaboratively to make improvements to neighborhoods. You know, the reality is, I'm the neighborhood resource guy, probably five, maybe 10% of my time is devoted towards organization and outreach to neighborhoods. So this $25,000 supports a 20-hour person to really do that neighborhood organizing and build those neighborhoods' capacity.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Levinson?
John, I'm going to disagree with you a little bit. Having been part of the, the second neighborhood to do the revitalization work, one of the things I think that has really evolved in this area of what the city does in our community is that it used to be that the first couple of neighborhoods had this competitive process of $100,000. And I think there was a lot of capacity building that was done internally by volunteers in neighborhoods. And one thing that I haven't really seen, and what I saw, especially with the Kensington neighborhood, there had not been any real kind of cohesiveness and even leadership within the neighborhood. And I think the Kensington neighborhood has still struggled with that leadership aspect and doing activities that are self-starting and within the neighborhood, maybe with some funding from, you know, neighborhood activity funds. One of the performance measurements that I haven't really seen in subsequent phases, maybe with Old North Longmont neighborhood as not one of those examples, is that I haven't seen a lot of neighborhood groups growing out of these areas of the final phases, the Kiteley, Lanyon, and Spangler. I know Old North Longmont has really formed a real neighborhood group, and they have meetings, and they have representation at NGLA. And the most important thing would be to finish the revitalization work we've done, just like when we're working with our parks. We have all these parks, but we're not really keeping up on them. So to maybe continue with some work, but not start a new neighborhood, I want to see some long-lasting effects and maybe some, even if it's within Lanyon and Spangler neighborhoods, having even a three or four block, 30 homes forming a neighborhood group within those revitalization areas. I haven't seen that come forward, to make sure that our money that we've invested has a lasting effect in the community building that seems like the city came in and was the coordinator of all this, but there doesn't seem to be sustaining interest from the neighborhoods and people that are so invested now and with knowledge and knowing their neighbors that they want to clump together and self-identify as a group. So, and if they do that, I mean, and they stick together for 10 months, they have access to Neighborhood Activity Fund grants, they, which, you know, would be less money that we would spend with CDBG, or they could do neighborhood infrastructure projects through the Neighborhood Improvement Fund, which is community building in collaborative nature, plus contributions from the neighborhood in sweat equity perhaps. I think that those things will leverage more work in these communities than, you know, once the city employee leaves, it seems like things are not continuing to stick together. And that's my concern, that do we want to spend another, I guess it's now, the Neighborhood Revitalization Request is now down to around $15,000. Could we find a way through, you know, code enforcement, the multifamily, the crime-free housing projects and all those things, build some community without spending this money to build the community? Could we add maybe a couple of hours here and there to the way we're working in these targeted areas already?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, we are leveraging those, those resources, crime-free multi-housing, there's a number of things that are going on, code enforcement works closely, the Landlord-Tennant Alliance. We are trying to leverage as much as we can in the midtown area. And we've had various successes and some not so successes. I think Lanyon and Spangler, Spangler is merging, and, and I think the jury's out on that. Lanyon did not maintain an organized neighborhood, but Kensington is still hanging in there, though they're struggling. They're, they applied for and are supporting a grant for the playground along with a private donor. Kiteley and Old North Longmont are going strong. They, Kiteley just adopted the park, they're applying for a grant. So, you know, out of the six neighborhoods, and we also provide with that strategic plan something that neighborhoods can go back to. Mr. Ortezide has done that for Call Your Park and other kinds of things. So it creates a strategy that, that has a long impact. And, and really four out of those six neighborhoods have come out strong from my perspective and are still engaged. And Spangler is merging, and they're really coming along well.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Considering it is after 11 o'clock, we have two councilmembers who are sick, and the mayor has just flown in. If we could keep our comments to one minute or less in order to get through the rest of our agenda, I think it would be a kindness to everybody on council. And we're not making any firm decisions tonight, so we have plenty of time to talk to one another and formulate opinions and get more information. But at 11:15 at night is probably not a good time of night to be unloading a lot of the information on councilmembers and pumping staff members for a lot of detail because we're not going to assimilate it. So just as a kindness to the rest of us in this room, if we could keep our comments to one minute or less, that would be great.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Actually, we have, all we have left to cover real quickly is Public Safety Fund, and I can do that within five minutes. So I will try to do that. So, all right, so 2014 Public Safety Fund budget, we included a pro forma in your packet on page S89, building that out about 10 years or further so you can see what's happening looking ahead for this fund with some conservative projections. We bring this fund to you because, you know, it's one of our key operating funds, and it is strapped for dollars in the sense of the amount of requests from Public Safety between the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund are not able to be met from year to year. So it's, we try to do what we can out of this fund and at the same time maintain a good fund balance with it. So it has, it's $5.19 million of sales tax for this coming year. We also have intergovernmental revenues from grants, and then $277,000 from firing range operations, 41.38 FTE in police fire, communications, emergency management, and graffiti removal. There's one-time expenses in here of $142,000. Major items are $37,700 for an automated fingerprint system, $35,000 for computer equipment for the comm center, and $25,000 for CopLogic online recording system. Firing range operations, as I mentioned already, $277,000 totally offset by user fees. And finally, we have $350,000 for the annual lease on fire station number one. That actually goes through 2020, and once that actually finishes up, we will have more, free up more dollars for one-time expenses in the future. This fund will finish with a fund balance projected of $1.6 million this year, which will include an emergency reserve of $428,000, a 8% reserve. And the 2014 budget will take that down to $1.52 million. We will, we program it to spend up to $150,000 of one-time expenses annually, but we use that as a fund balance for purposes as they come up. And sometimes that does exceed 150, but not this proposed year. And that's all I have, and we're here. Jeff Sager's here tonight as well to answer any questions related to the Public Safety Fund. fund.
One minute.
All right. So to conclude the budget presentation, I just wanted to make a couple of points. You know, there was references tonight about what about the rest of the budget? And we bring you forward some highlights of the budget and we will bring you forward these areas that you've listened to tonight because we are looking for direction on those specific areas, but we are not trying to exclude any parts of the budget for discussion. So I will once again remind you, if there's anything within the budget that you would like for us to bring forward for discussion, you don't need to tell me tonight. You can contact me during the week and we will schedule it in one of the next two weeks. But this time, we do have a lot of things scheduled for next week. We are pre-recording presentations for the CIP, which you'll already be receiving so that you won't have to sit through those, but you will be able to answer, or I mean, ask questions or hopefully answer questions on the CIP. And we do have some other areas of the budget that we will be highlighting next week. So it will be a busy week next week as well. I'm done. Two minutes, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess it's time for council comments.
We have one more.
Oh, one more. Oh, that's right.
Mayor Coombs, your next time is the appointment of Colorado Municipal Policy Committee members and call for CML legislative priorities and Sandy Cedar will present this.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to see if you would like to basically assign someone to be your policy committee member to CML and an alternate tonight.
I would love to have Councilmember Levinson to continue to be our policy representative and Sandy Cedar to be our alternate. And that's a motion.
All right. All in favor? Let's vote. Okay, it's seven to zero.
Yes, Mayor Coombs, sorry, I looked at Santos differently. Members of council, also, CML is asking if there's any policy conversations or any legislation that you would like for them to pursue this year.
If we think of something, can we just contact you later with that?
Absolutely. We can bring back any policy conversations that you'd like to have.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I guess it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? I guess, being no one, I'll close final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. In going over several of the minutes of boards and commissions, it's come to my attention that councilmembers are inserting themselves into boards and commission meetings. I would caution councilmember liaisons to intervene in boards and commissions, especially when it comes to their meetings, especially when, and then especially when it comes into potential quasi-judicial proceedings. When I presented in front of the head, the chairs and co-chairs of the boards and commissions in 2010, I made a recommendation to, and also to council, that it is our job as liaisons to be there to answer questions of the boards and commissions as representatives of council, not to direct boards and commissions. If we have a general question about a topic, then, you know, ask the chair, hey, I have a question. But not to be there and say, there's a motion on the floor with no second. That's not, that's really not our job. They can run their, the chair can run their meeting however they choose. That's their meeting. We are there as an observer. And to be there to answer questions, again, to be an objective councilmember if they have questions regarding budget or how council may or may not vote or however. And then if they may ask, hey, what's your personal opinion? And then if they have something that they may want to bring to council, you're the vessel to bring it, you know, potentially to bring it to council whether you may agree with it or not. But I would caution members of council to intercede in board and commission into their meetings because it's getting a little tricky and, you know, I would, again, I would caution councilmembers, especially when you're in a quasi-judicial proceeding. Because then, if you intercede in that quasi-judicial proceeding, in that board and commission, you're going to potentially see that at council. And you may have disqualified yourself by intervening in that board and commission as a councilmember. So please take that to heart.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would love to announce my business of the week. It will be Left Hand Brewing Company, who happens to be hosting Pints and Politics tomorrow evening at 5 o'clock.
Thursday.
Thursday. Sorry. It's seems, it will be tomorrow in just a few minutes. But it is Thursday, 5 o'clock, at 1265 Boston Avenue. Come and hear your council candidates talk about public policy. Should be a lot of fun. Drink beer. It'll be great.
Councilmember Levinson?
They may make more sense then.
Yeah.
So there is a birthday on the table, but, but we spent all the budget money, so we can't get a cake or, or flash mob, or even, we're out of money to even sing a song for Harold. So anybody want to join me in singing my happy birthday and?
I'm not going to sing.
Well, you never did anyway. All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Harold. Happy birthday to you.
Nobody has a voice. It has been more, the card I love.
There you go. Forty-one.
How about this one? Hey, Bagley, you know, you've had a birthday shout, hooray, hooray. We'd like to sing to you today, one year older and wiser, too. Happy birthday to you. I bet you haven't heard that one yet. There you go. Yay, just for you, a special one.
Councilmember Levinson?
Oh, thanks, since I was already talking, I'm sorry. It will never happen again. But that doesn't count for my minute. Okay, all right, you're talking, you're using my minute. And I want to use my minute to respectfully challenge Councilmember Santos on some things because how Councilmember Santos interacts with boards and commissions is a way to do it. I would agree with him that you should not be inserting yourself as to how the meeting should be run. However, when, for instance, Transportation Advisory Board, I go to a lot of transportation-related meetings, if there's information that would be useful to them, I will bring that up and I will continue to bring that up for one more month.
I agree.
So, okay, all right. So I just want to clarify that at times, you don't just have to sit there and be quiet. Sometimes you have information that you need to share and at that point, share it, but not in running the meetings and stuff like that. Anyway, I won't go there. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. I guess I didn't want to correct the minutes, but the minutes we approved earlier didn't note the correct time of the Latino Chamber of Commerce Multicultural Business Expo on September 26th. It's between 10 and 3, not in the evening. So the cost is, I think, $20 and councilmembers are welcome to go. And I think Harold and Sean are kicking off the morning with a little bit of introduction and talk around what we do for businesses in the city. So it would be nice to, I'll be there, listening to what you have to say and I'll learn something throughout the day. So I encourage other councilmembers who have time to even come for a short amount of time to do some interaction. That would be great.
Thanks, Mayor. Any comments?
We have a couple. The first I wanted to remind everyone as time is approaching that the Fireball Run will actually be going on, not this weekend, but next weekend. And I think it'll be a great event for Longmont and it's going to bring a lot of attention to our community. We are, we are working with the visitors group and we will be getting more information out, but I just wanted to kind of throw it out tonight that that's coming up and it's going to be a great community event. Sandy has something she wants to talk about real quick.
Mayor and council, I apologize for those of you who were here for a pre-session tonight at 5:30. I'm not exactly sure what happened with the calendars because it wasn't showing on our calendars, but it was showing on other calendars, and so I apologize. We should have corrected that one that was brought up to us and just really confirm that. So we do have the pre-session. We do, we do, we do next Tuesday and there will be food and wonderful things to do. So we'll be finalizing our desired outcomes of, desired results of government during that session. That's at 5:30 next Tuesday. And again, I apologize for being galling it.
Councilmember Levinson?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This will be adjourned.[1526.63]